Bob, are there any changes to the --
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, is a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make it.
I move that we adopt the agenda, second.
Motion, second, adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carriers, need approval of the April 9, 2015 minutes. Any changes, additions, corrections at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, approve the minutes of April 9, 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Councilmember, councilmember Becker.
Thank you, Chairman Plaine. The SP requested rezone, the SP on Maxon cottages on Maxon and Snyder. We had a meeting on that property. No one opposed it at the meeting, and I would like to try to get this approved today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to be as brief as possible, if I could. Let me help my colleague out, Councilman Hunt. They have you right here.
Here's the same place.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and all the members of the Commission. I'm here today to speak about the proposal you have off Ashland City Highway in my district. Let me begin by asking the question, and I'm not going to ask you to say anything, but just by show of hands, how many of you would like to see an industrial warehouse in your backyard?
I don't know if that's a question, appropriate question for the Commissions.
I'd like to make it clear that I'm not, my assignments does not mean that I prejudge the issue, and it's probably not an appropriate question.
No, no, that's fine. I'm going to assume that none of you would want an industrial warehouse in your backyard. My comments today are going to be more about policy than this actual proposal. Of course, the sub-area plan in my district has not been updated since before I took office in 2007, and I do believe that on this particular proposal, you have one property owner, you have two parcels. One is zoned IR, which is industrial already, and the other parcel is RS-15. They are adjacent to each other. With what the property owner could do currently, he could already propose and construct and develop industrial development on the parcel that is fronting Ashland City Highway. Now, this goes from Ashland City Highway all the way to Cato Road. The residential part, he could not. He would have to, he would be able, it's about 14 acres, I believe. RS-15, he could build about 40 homes on 14 acres on that back parcel, and that would let out on Cato Road, which would turn around and wind out to Ashland City Highway. So, you may hear from some people in the community, and I don't want the argument that we don't want industrial to overshadow this conversation. Regardless of if you all take no action, or if you recommend no action, industrial can happen on the property that's already zoned IR. And I need, I think that should be clear, that there can already be an industrial activity on one of the parcels that we're speaking about. I don't think it's good land use policy to have residential zoning backing up to industrial. I think that when the land use policy was placed on the parcel, I think we missed the mark there, putting residential zoning adjacent to and backing up to industrial zoning on two adjacent parcels of property. And so, the applicant is asking to zone both parcels IWD, all right? It's a lesser intense use, lesser intense industrial use. I would rather see this in place because I'm a visionary, I'm not thinking about, right now, I'm not thinking about five years from now, I'm thinking 10 years from now, if all of this is developed out, and you have industrial, and then you have a residential subdivision placed right behind that, I see a lot of vacant homes that are very hard to sell, that are lowering property values in the area. I live in this area, I actually live in the subdivision that is right across the street from the residential parcel now. I'm moving, I'm actually building a bigger house in our district, two subdivisions over off Edens Creek Road, and that's a large investment for my family. I don't want to see our property values lower because we have not been properly thoughtful about how we plan the development of our district and our area. Now, if this proposal is granted, I would want the applicant to take every precaution possible, and I would ask for you to think about what restrictions could be placed on this if the proposal is recommended approved, because I wouldn't want there to be any site of any industrial development. I would want them to have buffers that will prevent sightlines from any residence that surrounds this particular proposal. I would also want the applicant to be very sensitive to what type of industrial uses come into the area, which the applicant has stated that they're willing to place covenants on the property, they're willing to restrict the type of uses that could be made on the property. They didn't apply for SP zoning, and this is a blanket zoning request to IWD, but if this were to come to council, disapproved or approved by the Commission, I probably would amend this to some sort of a SP, not changing the IWD usage, but putting more restrictions on the IWD zoning to prevent some of the uses that could be placed on this particular property. So, I implore you to use all of your wise judgment and wisdom in making a decision when this proposal comes before you. I really don't have a stance for or against. I am for good land use policy, and I implore you to really dig into the land use policy and how that could affect any residential development in the future that would be next to industrial development, and think about if you would want to live next to that yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members that have recognized Nashville Next update?
My name is Cindy Wood. I'm with the Community Plans Division, and today's Nashville Next topic is Transitions and Infill. The Nashville Next Growth and Preservation Concept Map is the tool for aligning spending, regulations, and metro programs to shape improvements in quality of life so that new development and redevelopment aligns with community values. It's based on input provided through the three-year Nashville Next process and the 25-year community planning process. It reflects Nashvillian's desires for how Nashville should grow in the future. The 14 community plans were used as the starting point for developing the concept, and the input from Nashville Next was added. The concept map you see here provides high-level guidance for the other components of the Nashville Next general plan, including the 14 updated community plans and the updated community character manual. The part of the concept map we're discussing today calls for strategic infill to support transit and activity centers. The transitions and infill areas are shown on this graphic. They are symbolic representations of direction that is reflected in the land use, transportation, and infrastructure element, and in the 14 community plans. It's important to note that while the Nashville Next general plan has a 25-year time horizon, the community plans have a shorter, about seven to 10-year time horizon. The community plan updates that are being made with the initial adoption of Nashville Next do not reflect all of the changes that could be made to implement the concept map. The land use, transportation, and infrastructure element of Nashville Next provides an action to guide implementation of the transitions and infill concept through the community planning process. Several factors are considered in deciding how to reflect a transition and infill area that is shown on the concept map in a community plan. Some examples are listed here. There are three main approaches to reflecting the transitions and infill concept in the community plans. The first, shown here, is through updated community character policies that include language about how to achieve transitions between higher-intensity policies in centers and corridors and adjacent residential neighborhoods. Locations at the edges of centers and corridors provide appropriate places for a range of housing options and lower-intensity mixed-use development to both support the main functions of the centers and corridors and provide a transition to adjacent neighborhoods. And the example you see here is along Gallatin Pike just north of East Magnet School. The second approach is to apply a moderate-scale residential policy such as a suburban or urban neighborhood evolving between a center corridor and a lower-scale residential neighborhood. This approach provides additional housing options that meet diverse housing needs, helps support businesses within the center, and increases the viability of transit along the corridor. And the image you are looking at here is of the Harding Town Center area near Belmead. The third approach is through the use of a proposed new transition policy in the community character manual that supports not only moderately scaled so-called missing-middle housing, but also small-scale offices and live-work uses such as the example that is shown here. These provide additional housing and small-scale employment options in addition to serving as transitions. And the example shown here is Sawyer Brown Road opposite Bellevue Center site. Transition and infill areas are especially appropriate for providing missing-middle housing, which includes types such as small to moderate-scale live-work and multifamily housing types, along with duplexes and detached accessory dwelling units, and these are just a few examples. The public comment period for the current draft of Nashville Next ends on April 30. The final community open houses to review and comment on the draft are coming up on Monday, and you see the details right here. Thank you for your attention, and we hope you'll get or stay involved in Nashville Next.
Thank you, Cindy.
Mr. Chairman, just a note for the Commission. The static draft will be posted on May the 11th. That sets the schedule for your scheduled public hearing is on June 10, with a follow-up meeting on June 15. Kelly will be back in touch with you to make sure of your attendance at that. Tomorrow, we have a briefing of the city, the Metro Council will be here at 12:30, and I do want to pass out, this is the guidebook that we're using for the period now, and I don't think, I think you had copies of it, but not the final guidebook that was presented. Thank you.
Bob, any items to be deferred?
Yes, there are several items on the deferral list. Before I get to that, I had an announcement that someone left their wallet and keys out front. The security guard has those if you left your wallet and keys out front. The first item on the deferral list is item number two. This is case number 2015Z-003TX-001. This is a request to amend Chapter 17.37 and 1740 of the Metropolitan Code to update the downtown code standards. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item number three, 2015SP-022-001. This is a request to rezone from AR-2A to SP zoning for property located at 6309 Nolansville Pike to permit up to 108 residential units, and the staff recommendation is to withdraw. The applicant has requested a withdrawal on that item. Next item's item five, 2015SP-037-001. This is the Southgate Station SP. This is a request to rezone from R-6 to SP zoning for properties located at 514, 518, and 520 Southgate Avenue, and 1608 Pillow Street to permit up to 41 units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting, and I will note on that one that Commissioner G. is recusing himself on that one. Item number six is case number, case number 2015SP-038-001. This is a request to rezone from R-8 to SP zoning for property located at 5825 and 5827 Leslie Avenue, and Leslie Avenue unnumbered, to permit up to 15 detached residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. And then, next item is item seven, case number 128-78G-001. This is a request to amend the Hermitage Business Center Commercial PUD overlay district for a portion of property located at 4001 Lebanon Pike to add 1.2 acres to the boundary of the PUD. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. And the last item on the deferral list is item 20, case number 2015Z-021PR-001. This is a request to rezone from R-6 to RM-9, various properties on Inlow Street. The staff recommendation is to defer to the June 11 Planning Commission meeting, and that's all the items on the deferral list.
Mr. Bidder, request, and for deferral, our withdrawal on items two, three, five, six, seven, and 20, is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on consent.
Before I get to the consent items, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So, as I read these items into the record, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these items removed from the consent agenda. First item is item number nine on page seven of your agenda. This is case number 2014Z-006TX-002. This is a request to amend Section 17.40.730 of the Metropolitan zoning code to modify the general requirements of public notice signs and delete Section 17.40.710 pertaining to notice by newspaper. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item's item 10, case number 2015Z-007TX-001. This is an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Metropolitan Code zoning regulations pertaining to sex clubs. Staff recommendation is to approve with a substitute ordinance. Next item is item 11, 2015SP-024-001. This is a request to rezone from RS-5 to SP zoning for property located at 620 South 13th Street to permit an attached two-family structure. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 13, 2015SP-041-001. This is a request to rezone from R-8 to SP zoning for property located at 511 Snyder Avenue and 5800 Maxon Avenue to permit up to four detached residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The next item on the consent agenda is item 14, 2015SP-042-001. This is a request to rezone from R-20 to SP zoning for properties located at 2800 and 2804 Valley Brook Place to permit three single-family lots. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 15 on page eight of your agenda, case number 2015Z-016PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS-5 to R-6 for properties located at 902 and 904 Douglas Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 17, case number 2015Z-018PR-001. This is a request to rezone from IG to MUIA zoning for properties located on Cowan Street and Cowan Court. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 18, 2015Z-019PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS-10 to RS-7.5 for property located at 308 Tanksley Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next case is item 21 on page nine of your agenda, case number 2015Z-022PR-001. This is a request to rezone from AR-2A to CL zoning for a portion of property located at Nolansville Pike unnumbered. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 22, 2004UD-002-007. This is a request for a revision to the preliminary UDO and final site plan approval for Phase Six only for a portion of the villages of Riverwood UDO located at Hoggett Ford Road and Dotson Chapel Road, and at Hoggett Ford Road unnumbered, to permit 91 dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And next case is item 23, 91P-006-002. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of a commercial PUD and for final site plan approval for property located at 4529 Nolansville Pike to convert an existing building into a community education use and to add green space. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 24, employee contract renewal for Cindy Wood. Recommendation is to approve. Next item is 25, under other business, capital improvement budget for 2015 through 2016 to 2020 to 2021. Staff recommendation is to approve. And the last item on the consent agenda is item 29, is to accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Bob, if you would go back and call out the numbers, only the item numbers.
Okay. Items on consent are item numbers nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 29.
You've heard the request for these items to be approved on consent, is there a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from item 25, the capital improvements budget, please.
Pardon?
I want to recuse myself from item 25, the capital improvements budget.
Pull that off.
No, I want to recuse myself.
Don't recuse yourself, I'm sorry, okay. Is there a motion to approve these on consent?
No.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those now have been approved by consent. The items that will be heard today on public hearing are items 1A and B, 4, 8, 12, 16, and 19.
I need to recuse myself from items 1A and 1B.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, I just want to apologize to Commissioner Clifton. I didn't run off with half his package.
Oh, okay. So, you're okay?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The first case is a plan amendment request for Green Hills Midtown. It's along 12th Avenue South, and the request is to change from urban neighborhood evolving policy and urban neighborhood center to urban residential corridor policy for the parcels outlined in red. That is, the existing policy is neighborhood evolving with the southernmost property being neighborhood center, and in 2008, a detailed design plan was done for the 12th Avenue South corridor, and so there are some special policies associated with this area. In the Nashville Next Growth and Preservation Concept Map, the policy is proposed to be T4 urban residential corridor, neighborhood center for the southern property, along with the special policies. You can see that here. Because of the, we recommend approval because the residential corridor policy reflects the area's recommended policy change as part of Nashville Next. However, we do want the accompanying special policies to be retained to limit building height and address setbacks, access, and parking. Okay, I'll be presenting the SP portion of the request. The request is to rezone from CS and R-8 to SP to permit a multifamily residential development containing up to 158 dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, subject to approval of the associated policy change. The property is located on the east side of 12th Avenue South and south of Lawrence Street. It's approximately 1.89 acres in size. Current zoning is CS and R-8, CS for the southernmost property and R-8 for the remaining properties. The existing policy for the area is T4 urban neighborhood center, T4 urban neighborhood evolving, and special policies. The Growth and Preservation Concept Map has T4 urban neighborhood center on the southernmost property, T4 urban residential corridor, and special policies. Staff is recommending the requested policy change as well. The plan includes a multifamily residential development of up to 158 dwelling units. The building is three stories and 35 feet along 12th Avenue South. There is a raised foundation also proposed. Vehicular access is proposed along two points along 12th Avenue South, one at the northern property line and one at the southern. The southern access will connect to an existing alley, and the alley will be improved for the length of the property of this development. The alley also provides access to the parking garage, as well as the front access. They are providing 30 spaces over the required parking for additional public parking. A traffic study was completed and reviewed by Metro Public Works, and associated improvements required. This is the proposed elevation along 12th Avenue South. Stoops and porches are proposed along with a raised foundation. The facade is, the facade plane will be interrupted every 50 feet. It includes a minimum of 15% glazing, and there is a public plaza along 12th Avenue South as well. The proposed street section for 12th Avenue South is here. It shows the height as 3, three stories and 35 feet. It does include sidewalks and a, and planting strip. Character imagery of the development is included additionally on this slide. There have been several revisions to the plan as the applicant has worked with planning staff. The original development proposal was for 222 units and four stories with a limited step back on the fourth story. The plan was revised initially to include 164 units and four stories with a 35-foot step back. That was further revised, and the current plan is 158 units and three stories. The plan supports several critical planning goals. The project is located along an existing bus route which provides for transportation choice. Additionally, bike parking is being provided as part of the development. Sidewalks are being improved along 12th Avenue South to increase walkability in an existing urban neighborhood. The project is providing an additional housing choice in an existing urban area. This is a photograph, the site is on the left, looking south along 12th Avenue South, and then this is looking north along 12th Avenue South. Again, staff is recommending approval with conditions Again, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions as it is consistent with the, excuse me, approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, subject to approval of the associated policy change, as it is consistent with the recommended policy change and meets several critical planning goals.
Thank you, Lisa. This item is open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes, and you may hold two back for rebuttal if you wish.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Moniz, Tom White. 360 Club Court, represent the applicant. I would request the two minutes for rebuttal. With respect to the two issues that are here before the commission today, the first one is a policy issue. And perhaps the most significant thing in the policy issue has to do with the creating of the walkable neighborhoods. As you've seen from the chart that was put on by the staff, the client has diligently worked with the staff, they've diligently worked with the neighbors, the council person in the area, as the number of units has continued to drop and the height has decreased from four stories to three stories. All those matters came about as a result of significant dialogue in the neighborhood. But with respect to walkable neighborhoods, which is a critical thing, my first comment reminds you that there are more than 30 additional spaces being provided that are required by this development in an area where additional parking should be encouraged, not mandated, but encouraged. The urban residential corridor policy allows for this variety of housing types that will create the, quote, "walkable environment" that exists today. And they talk about the emphasis on the building and site design that support walkability. I think that's a very significant thing that the client has done, and it is, in my opinion, improved at every time that they have changed this. With respect to the rezoning itself, I want to comment that there's an emphasis about affordable and workforce housing. And I want to comment to this commission, this is a debate that rarely does not take place here. I don't know if one client that I've represented has ever as diligently applied and tried to make something work here. And the staff will correct me on that, but we've gone through any number of proposals, recommendations, putting things in restrictive covenants, and other matters of a similar nature where the city's not just set up yet to fully implement that, but it's been absolutely no lack of effort by my client. The clients agreed to do 15 to 20 micro-units, which are lesser than 600 feet. That was one of the components we talked about. We diligently have tried to come up and have suggested rentals within certain ranges. We made a commitment to do it. We couldn't get enforceability as it now sits, but it was no lack of trying to make it happen. With respect to the approvals here today, I don't know of one thing asked by a metro agency my client has not agreed to. They've come across the board with everything that has been asked for. And I would remind the commission, there is a policy matter here as well which requires six votes, so I'd urge you to vote in favor of the policy and the zone change, and let us go to the legislative body, which is the next level. Thank you for your courtesy.
You'll be allowed two minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Darren Freeman. I served the Tabernacle Baptist Church as their pastor. We're located at 2214 12th Avenue South. We have been in the 12 South area now. This fall will be 50 years. And since then, the community has changed. We're noticing tremendous growth, and a lot of our members who used to live in the area are no longer there. They've moved out, sold their homes, and moved to other places. Roughly, we're about 15%, I think, of our membership that lives in the area. So for us to do effective ministry and do missions and outreach, we can do it at 12 South. However, most of our members are not there, and some of the things that we have tried to do have not been welcomed. We've had outdoor events. On two occasions, we've had police called on us to stop those events, and nevertheless, we continue to move on. So we, as a church and our board, we sat down and tried to figure out what is it that we need to do. We reached out to Bristol Development Corporation and invited them in to see what it is that we can do to maximize our property, and that's why we're standing here today, asking you to vote favorably on this SP approval. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. We'll be allowed this part over, too? Okay.
One more. Jeff Hines with Littlejohn and Associates. Very quickly, I'm going to help frame a little bit of the comparison of this site in terms of how it fits within the context of the neighborhood. We're located on a major collector's. Staff, as mentioned, we have certainly transit available. We also have B-cycle available in that neighborhood. The property is currently a church, and some homes that are at the point of aging where they need to be repaired and addressed, so this is a property in transition. It's currently not generating tax base for the city as a church use, so that would be a major difference between the proposal. The three-story component, it would be in keeping with the standards that currently would be allowed for any single-family home to be done there, within the 35-foot height, so we're not different in that regard. The massing of the structure has been broken up considerably along 12th Avenue. Staff mentioned the offsets in the building and also the courtyard elements, so we've done a lot to be in character with the 12 South neighborhood. The properties across the street are residential homes, but they front the side streets of Linden Avenue and Ashwood Avenue. They do not front toward this property. The homes on this property do front 12th Avenue. So, you know, that's how this site is currently existing, and we would keep it that way with the proposed structure fronting that way. We are, as part of this proposal, improving a turn lane in 12th Avenue northbound, which would not be of any benefit to the residents of this community, but would help serve the traffic needs of the area in terms of peak hour heading into the city. So that was a request by Public Works that is part of this proposal. We are improving the alleyway at the rear, which is substandard, and currently, Public Works has said they have difficulty in getting trash trucks, those types of things, to provide services. So that is part of it, and we are widening it on this property. Adjacent to the proposal is a three-story office building to the south, and then beyond that is a four-story, three-story with a setback that the Hill Company developed that is multifamily also. To the north of the property is a one- and two-story residential homes, but they both front Lawrence Avenue. So we are not contextually up against any other property visually that we would not be in transition in terms of being able to plant, provide buffer yards. Lastly, I'll share with you that the traffic study basically summarized that in comparison of this use to the existing zoning policy, we would have an addition of 59 trips in the AM peak and 51 in the PM peak. I think both of those, basically from the Public Works review, are not seen as a major increase, and that's comparing today to what we are proposing. In closing, I would just ask that, you know that we have had multiple community outreaches, participated in community meetings, met with individual groups that have expressed concerns and such. We have not reached unanimity on this, but it isn't for lack of trying. So I think it's been a well-vetted process, well-discussed, and we would ask for your support.
Thank you. The applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support of this project? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? If you're going to speak, come to the microphone and line up and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ken Jakes, and I live at 5920 Clarkson Pike. And I came here today to request that you disapprove this community plan amendments. It doesn't coincide with the existing neighborhoods and communities. It's extensively high-density. And with that comes certain issues, congestion of traffic, waiting time in traveling, and I'm not going to go into all that, you hear that all the time. I do want to say this, that it lays the groundwork, if this is approved, for future high-density. I know you've all heard the expression, "How do you eat an elephant?" You eat it one bite at a time. And how do you change the neighborhoods and communities, changing one zone, zone change at a time? So I'd like to ask you to please consider disapproving these two bills. I hear all the time in the metro council and other meetings, certain things, this is what they're doing in Atlanta, this is what they're doing in Houston, here's what they're doing in Boston. Well, Nashville's not Boston, and quite frankly, I'm glad we're not. Okay? I'd like to just tell you that the neighborhoods and communities matter, folks. These people making investments in their home. You know, this is not by right. This is by privilege. Their right is the existing zoning. What they're seeking is a privilege, and this privilege is at the detriment to the community. And I don't know if anybody else is here, you know, I came up here on my own tonight, but I'm sure there's probably going to be other people that will tell you they do not want their lifestyle changed, and do not think for one minute that this is not going to change their way of life. And the decision lies in, well, the final decision lies in the council, but the approval today is in your hands, and I'd like to ask you to please disapprove this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to talk loudly because we can't hear a thing back there. My few sentences contain many quotes. They're from the Bristol website, the D and DP, the Green Hills Midtown Plan, Representative Allen and Moore's letter in support of our UDO on the business district, and the draft Nashville NEXT plan. Absentee Bristol has a concise goal and product. It's to provide amenity-rich urban and suburban living at attainable prices in growing Sunbelt cities. This goal fits Tabernacle's announced aim to maximize profit for its departure from the neighborhood. However, neither Bristol nor Tabernacle further the new urban or the whole neighborhood principles for renovating historic streetcar communities. In the 12 South case, the massive upscale Bristol project will clash with four smart growth principles. One, it will clash with the mass scale and setbacks of the 18 repurposed vintage structures that define our mixed-use center. Number two, it will clash with the current pattern of built setbacks and spacing of 15 vintage homes previously mentioned that define our mixed housing district in which most of the Bristol project will be placed. Number three, it will clash with the urban design standards in the UDO drafted by resident leaders and now being promoted by our council ladies. Finally, it will clash with the explicit focus on equity, fairness, and diversity in the draft Nashville NEXT guiding principles. There are seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there. I'm Jaclyn Larson. I have been a neighbor in the 12 South District for seven years, along with my husband. I am here representing future children of the Waverly Belmont School, and I'm that crazy parent that thought it was a good idea to bring my children to this meeting. Next time, we'll get a babysitter. But I'm here just to ask that you kindly reconsider this development. The scale of it worries me. I used to live directly on 12th Avenue. It was the corner of 12th Avenue and Ashwood, and we moved away a few streets over because of the traffic. And I am very concerned with the density of this project and the type of traffic and causes that it will mean for our children. As you can see, she's opposed as well. And I'm going to end with that. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, Councilwoman Moore and Councilwoman Allen, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name's Brian Story. I'm a resident of 12 South, residing at 2208 11th Avenue South. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Dana, who's a new board member of the 12 South Neighborhood Association, but unfortunately could not be here today. She has owned our home since 2006 and is a 10-year resident of the neighborhood. We live less than 500 feet from the proposed development. I've come to speak specifically about the issues we currently face on 11th Avenue. I live in a home built in 1930 with cast iron water pipes, sewer lines, that are nearing 100 years old and are state of deterioration. Just on our street, the population has doubled over the last two years as more than half the homes have been demolished to have two homes erected in its place. This has obliterated our water pressure and pushed sewer capacity to the brink. Additionally, rainwater inundates our inadequate storm drains, regularly flooding properties in low-lying areas of our street. The Bristol development would sit directly uphill from us, and will be funneling sewage from all 150-plus units downhill towards our street. This will overtake our infrastructure that is already at capacity, and the residents will be left to deal with the fallout. As our previously dead-end street will be opened up this fall as the entrance of this new Waverly Belmont School, we'll be surrounded by school traffic and Bristol traffic that previously has been nonexistent. Couple that with the fact that most residents on 11th must park on the street, we essentially have one lane of traffic to use on 11th and Lawrence. I urge you to slow down development in our area as the infrastructure is suffering dearly. The residents are being cast aside in favor of high-density developments that we simply do not support. Help us keep our neighborhood from being overrun. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for hearing our opinions. I'm Linda Davis. I live at 1305 Ashwood Avenue. I am a half a block from this proposed development. Right now, the traffic is so difficult, I can't get out on 12th Avenue to go either direction very many hours of the day, especially at the rush hour. Just a few weeks ago, we had severe thunderstorms, and I have lived in the neighborhood for 33 years, and for the first time in my memory, the corner of Linden and 12th Avenue South flooded to the point where it was not passable. The sewers in our neighborhood, as you have heard already, are at least 100 years old. My back alley has a sewer running underneath it. It caved in several years ago and had to have emergency repairs done to it. Please consider that we need the sewers addressed immediately, and it will not support this development if you allow this to go through. And the parking, this is a joke that you have 30 extra parking places for 158 units. Do you think those units are only going to have one car each? I doubt it. Families that have two people will probably have two cars. Are they going to have more than 300 parking places with the 30 extra, or what? I have noticed a huge uptick in litter because people are parking in our neighborhoods to go to these restaurants that we have lining 12th Avenue South now. I believe that's all I have to say right now. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Apling, and I live at 1202 Ashwood Avenue, across the street from the proposed development and its entrance. I have lived here for 30 years. I am asking you to oppose this zoning change on behalf of the residents within 600 feet of the proposed zoning change. I have a current data map, an additional petition signatures that you've got, and I would like to present the map. Several concerned neighbors went door-to-door within the 600 feet of the proposed zoning change, informing residents of what exactly the zoning change meant, informing them of the up to 158 one- and two-bedroom apartments planned. If this SPR zoning change were approved, residents were also informed of the current zoning of R8 duplex at most and CS commercial. Many of the neighbors knew nothing specific about this proposed zoning change. As you can see on the map, the properties in red oppose this zoning change. Properties in green are in favor. There are other colors. Yellow indicates that there are lots under construction. Properties in blue are business. There are seven Belmont properties to the north on the top of the map. Properties in white were vacant or did not respond. Of the 81 residents, 78 opposed this project. Only three were in favor. The overwhelming reasons stated by the neighbors living within 600 feet were traffic safety and density. We have witnessed overwhelming increase to 12th Avenue and to the quiet strictly residential side streets of mostly one-and-a-half, two-stores homes surrounding this proposed development. I would like to read some of the comments written on the...
Hi, I'm Liz Rosell. My husband and I have lived at the corner of Ashwood Avenue and 12th Avenue South for four and a half years, across the street from, directly across the street from the Tabernacle Bristol Development. We love our neighborhood, and we hope to raise a family here, but we are concerned about the proposed development and the irreversible damage it will cause to Nashville's hope of preserving the character of its historic in-town neighborhood. The density of the proposed development is not scaled for this part of... The density of the proposed development is not scaled for this part of 12th Avenue, nor the small neighborhood of 12th South. A development with this amount of density will cause issues with traffic on 12th Avenue at the intersections of Ashwood, Linden, and Lawrence, where the main entrance and exit of the building will be and where 12th Avenue is only 2-lane street. I support the Tabernacle Church in developing its site for another use, but it should be developed using current zoning, which is more scaled for this site and the neighborhood. The plot surrounding the site is surrounded by residential homes on three sides and should be developed respectfully with those residents in mind. I am not against development, but it needs to be done responsibly, keeping with the integrity of one of our few unique in-town neighborhoods, and in a manner that is scaled for the setting. This proposal is not consistent with scaled and responsible growth that we must have for our city and neighborhoods to function successfully, to get successfully together. What works for one area of town is not universal success for all areas. Please think, would you want this zoning change and this development built next to your own home? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lori Mendelson. This is my service dog. I live at 2212 11th Avenue South with my husband Ross Swanetsky, who couldn't be here today. Hello, nice to see you, Cory. Pastor Freeman. I've enjoyed having the church on the block next to me. Our house is on the dead-end part of Levin South, and with the houses that have just been demolished across the street, they're actually in our front yard now. And so I get to see people coming and going. It's very nice. The alley behind the church that's on the other side of the street, it is in bad shape. However, for a number of the neighbors, that has been the only place that they can park. There is not a lot of room on this street, so people have used behind their streets on the alley to park their cars, and it's been a safe place for many of them. I've never heard of any break-ins or burglaries. It's also an area where there are residents who have signs up saying, "Drive carefully, there are children here." If it needs to be repaired, let's repair it, but I don't think it needs to be repaired as a part of this project. This is not just a street, this is a community. And when you take something and you put it down in the middle of a community, you have to take a look at all the different aspects of it. This is bringing more people in and creating more needs for the people. We've already experienced some of the water pressure problems. We've had sewer problems before. It's a catastrophe waiting to happen. So thank you for your consideration in opposing this.
Thank you.
My name is Shannon Carney. I actually don't live in the neighborhood, but I'm here on behalf of my future grandkids that are going to be born into this neighborhood. My son and his wife live on 11th Avenue, and I have, over the last couple of years, seen the dramatic changes that are taking place, that are impacting this neighborhood. I moved to Nashville two years ago from Eugene, Oregon, because I visited for approximately 12 years and fell in love with it. The city really drew me to it. It said Nashville, the littlest, biggest, the biggest little city in America. And there was a kind of community attitude, a kind of neighborly welcome that I've experienced that I never did experience in Oregon. And I am profoundly and grateful that I moved here to experience this. But I believe that this unit, this future development, really has a way of coming to the core of why we moved here. It's about community, it's about neighborhood, it's about relationships. This violates this. It puts a kind of stress that causes anxiety in the neighborhood. It puts a kind of stress on a neighborhood where you've heard garbage and sewers, you've heard traffic. I've experienced all of that on 11th Avenue constantly because my kids live there, and I've walked the streets and I've seen the changes. So I would hope, from someone who's new to this community, who believes in this community, who has a belief that this community is going to get better and stronger, I'm very proud to be someone from Nashville, not Eugene, Oregon anymore, but I hope that you'll take into consideration the overall plan that this city has for its communities, and I hope you oppose this.
Hi, I'm Carrie Conley. I live at 2405 10th Avenue South. I'm a 10-year resident. I bought in the neighborhood 10 years ago because of the walkability, the diversity, and the historical nature of our neighborhood. I am fully in support of the church wanting to sell their lot, and we, all the blessings to them. What I'm against is a zoning change from medium density to high density in an area where it is surrounded by five residential streets of single-family 1-story homes. There is no way that they can tell us that blasting for an underground parking lot will not damage the five homes. I have pictures of my home with damage from blasting at the 12th South flats that required underground blasting. It was only 90 units and is over 1,000 feet away from my home. So I just don't know how they can tell us that there will not be structural damage to five streets of residential homes. Second, Bristol as a developer has had numerous lawsuits against it. I have the lawsuits here for structural damages. Also, they have never built in a strictly residential neighborhood. You will find them in the Gulch. You cannot compare the Gulch West End or Midtown to 12th South, which is a family residential neighborhood. So what I am asking for today is to support the church moving, but do not support the change in zoning. Please keep it medium density. There was a reason that lot was zoned that way with all the residential homes behind it. Also, please think about the 650 kids that will be going to Waverly Belmont on 10th Avenue South starting in the fall this year. Their safety should be the biggest concern about the amount of traffic and the more density we bring into the neighborhood. Thank you, and please vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Annie Carney. I live at 2225 11th Avenue South. 12th South is a pedestrian community. To add 158 apartments with 250 parking spaces precisely where 12th South changes from four lanes to two lanes and is surrounded by sidewalks and crosswalks is a traffic disaster that will put pedestrians in danger. There is no comparison to vehicular traffic with current zoning to the massive increase in traffic that will be guaranteed by this requested change in zoning. The traffic studies submitted by these developers is flawed and should be thrown out. A significant portion of this study was done when Belmont University was not in session. If you remove 7,000 residents who live within five blocks of this location, it guarantees an invalid traffic study. Here is the math. Every Wednesday and Sunday, 150 churchgoers drive to this destination. Two trips for these cars every week equals 300 car trips per week. Now add 158 apartment units and 250 parking spaces that will be used by residents and visitors multiple times a day, and traffic will skyrocket. 250 cars at an average of three trips a day times seven days per week equals 5,250 car trips per week. That is a 1,700% increase in weekly car traffic to this specific destination. That is 273,000 car trips on and off of the property in the first year alone. Each one of those 273,000 trips means that a car is crossing the sidewalk and driving through crosswalks where pedestrians are trying to walk. Again, we do not need a flawed traffic study. The photos in front of you, did I give you? Oh, someone was supposed to give you photos. Let's see. This isn't even to mention, one of the largest elementary schools in Davidson County is set to open in a few months, just 50 yards from the proposed building site. We have absolutely no idea how much traffic this will bring. Obviously, 12th South is a pedestrian community that is already under siege. A marked increase in traffic in this pedestrian community will guarantee chaos and an environment already in danger. I, for one, do not want...
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Carol Frazier, and I live at 1407 Elmwood, one block off 12th South. My family's lived in this neighborhood for 25 years, and we chose this area because we wanted to raise our family in a mixed racial and socio-economic environment. As you know, this has changed drastically and not necessarily for good. But let's talk parking. Our side streets are already so congested that it's very difficult for me to even park in my own house weekday evenings and all weekend long. I've had dinner guests that have to park blocks away to be able to come to my house. This creates hazards with cars pulling out of corners and walkers crossing streets with cars jockeying for parking spaces. The alleys have become extra parking lots, something I don't think they were intended to be, and I've seen cars getting clipped by other drivers too closely turning into the alleyways. Drivers often park their cars into residents' parking strips or across their driveways. The other morning, I saw a car being towed that had been left all night long across one of the residents' parking lots, and the resident couldn't get out of their own home. I hope this gives context to the insufficient parking spaces allotted by Bristol, and the 30 extra parking spaces can't possibly make up for the huge parking lot that is there now, the pay-for parking lot that's already there. The parking study that Bristol analyzed and included as part of their proposal is dated November 2011. It's not only out of date, but it's also insular in its perspective and with no impact analysis on surrounding residential neighborhoods like 12th South. The conclusions were based on averages, not highs or lows, and at the high points of parking occupancies, our parking problems would only be much worse. As a note, whatever spaces Bristol has included, extra spaces, are not for the neighbors. They're not for the neighborhood. They will be used maybe by others coming in to dine or shop, but they will hardly be enough. I totally support their right to sell their property, but please vote no.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Holton, and I moved into Melrose, which was what it was called back then, back in 1986. I moved there mostly because it was the only place I could afford a house, but I loved the neighborhood. We had the best neighbors, we could walk the streets. A little bit of a problem with drug dealers right across the street, the SWAT team took care of them. But I'll tell you right now, with some of the development that's going on, I would rather have the drug dealer back than see a development like what Bristol is proposing at the end of the street. The amount of traffic that this is going to create down 10th Avenue is going to be horrible. No one's going to drive down 12th. It's already too congested. 8th Avenue is becoming developed so fast, you're not going to be able to move down there. So everybody's going to try to go down 10th, right smack through a residential neighborhood, past the new Waverly Belmont School. It's going to be a mess. It's also, I am against this project because I think the density of this kind of apartment is too great for this area. This is a residential area. It's not the Gulch, it's not 8th Avenue, it's 12th Avenue. There are houses on both sides of the street. We want to keep a neighborhood where we can walk. Walkability doesn't just mean sidewalks. It means being able to get across the street alive. Right now, that's kind of hard to do in places on 10th Avenue. I just hope that you'll vote to maintain the character of our neighborhood and not let our property values go down by allowing this kind of excessive development. We want to have a safe neighborhood for kids, for older people, for a lot of different kinds of people to live and enjoy their lives, not a neighborhood where we're so crowded and so jammed by traffic that nobody can breathe. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Katherine Carbon Favreau. I live at 1501 Linden Avenue, and I've been in the neighborhood for 16 years. I'm against this rezoning. I would like to see them go back and zone and work in a plan with the medium-density zoning that is available to them today. I have no problem with the church selling the property, but please ask them to work within the medium-density zoning. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Favreau. I live at 2115 Eastwood Avenue. I've lived in the neighborhood 16 years, and I'm against this policy change in rezoning. From where I sit, my house has enough elevation that I can see the church, and I cannot see the three houses next to it that they own, but I see the treetops, and it's really a nice view. If they tear down those structures and build an apartment complex, that's what I'm going to look at. Now, Bristol, at the last public meeting at the church, they would have you believe that apartment buildings like this do not affect the surrounding property values, but I'm here to say they do. Now, we moved here from Seattle 16 years ago, and the house that I had to sell in Seattle was across the street from a three-story apartment complex. At the time, the Seattle housing market was very hot. Properties were being sold above asking price, there were bidding wars, they sold overnight. Our house took over three months to sell. The reason? Because it sat across the street from an apartment complex. That's what our realtor kept telling us. Potential buyers did not want to look at an apartment building, and they did not want the typical activity level associated with a high concentration of non-owner residents, such as the increased traffic movers, people moving in and out, and the noise. It does affect property valuable, it does affect property values negatively. It's inappropriate use of government to rezone the property, this proposed property, for the gain of the current owner of the church at the expense of the neighbors. So I would ask you to help us preserve our neighborhood and vote against this. I'm not against the church selling their property, but I am opposed to the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Annie Krueger, and I bring a little different perspective. I've only lived in Nashville for two months, moved here from Atlanta. I live at 2211 A 11th Avenue South. My property backs up at what looks like one of the entrances or exits to the new proposed parking garage part of the complex. We moved here for work. We were looking for a neighborhood that was like our Virginia Highland neighborhood in Atlanta, and we thought we found it in 12th South, a nice mix of residential and commercial. But I have to say, it's been a little bit of a rude awakening in the past two months. We didn't know about this. I blame myself for not doing my research. We've experienced the parking problems, the traffic problems, the water pressure sucks, quite honestly. And we're quite worried that what we thought we found in this neighborhood is going to go away completely, that kind of nice mix with more developments like this. So we are opposed to this development. We are not opposed to development. Obviously, we are one of those people who bought a new house, one of those dreaded two houses on the one lot house. We want to be good stewards, good neighbors, in a great neighborhood. We think this is a bad move, not just for us personally, our property, but for the neighborhood that we're growing to love. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caroline Dooley, and I live at 900 Waldkirch Avenue, which is a short one-block street that dead-ends into the new Waverly Belmont School. I just wanted to first mention that there's been a petition going around started by a neighbor, and over 300 people have signed opposing this project. So those of a small amount of us representing those people today, there's a larger number that are opposed to it. And I am definitely opposed to the zoning change. I think that medium-density housing with retail and a smaller scale is appropriate along 12th South, south of Wedgewood, but I'm not opposed to development. You know, and I just think it's important that we continue to, you know, look back on the 12th South detailed neighborhood design plan that, you know, promoted smaller developments along the street. And I just wanted to include some developments that I thought have been done appropriately along 12th and how dramatically different they are from this proposed development. There's 12th and Paris, that's a smaller building that has Burger Up in it. Most people are familiar with it, has 19 units, and it has two access points, not just on 12th Avenue South, additional entry access. 12th and Montrose, which is almost complete, that's a three-story building with 14 apartments above it, and some retail on the bottom. There's the new Becker's Corner. It's a two-story development being constructed next to the old Becker's Bakery site that has like four apartments above it. This is like, you know, 158 units. That is just, I can't even believe they're going to try and put that many units on this site. It's just going to cause the biggest bottleneck. I just, I think it's important that we have little pockets of retail and housing, but this gigantic thing is going to cause a major problem, so very opposed to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Matt Carney. I am a musician who lives in Nashville, Tennessee, and has lived in 12th South for 11 years now. When I heard about this proposed site, obviously, it was very alarming to me as someone who's been a part of the neighborhood for 11 years now. And we're honestly kind of overwhelmed and shocked that this would even be proposed for 12th, which is a two-lane walking street where houses are on it 50 feet from the entrance of 11th, which is going to be, you know, the entrance to an elementary school that is supposedly going to be the biggest one in Davidson County. So just that, the sheer magnitude of mass that they're trying to add to what is just a walking community that I've grown to love was disturbing. We heard about this plan, and we put up a little petition, and yeah, 300 people signed it without even, we told like two people, just word of mouth, and that wasn't even working it. That was just literally, I was just gauging to see what people would say. I know we're facing some unique challenges in 12th South and Nashville in general. I can't imagine your job sitting there this day and age with everything we're facing. But I, as a resident of this neighborhood for a decade now, I ask you to say no to this plan and preserve what our neighborhood... this plan and preserve what our neighborhood is and what it could be with proper development and healthy development that everyone can support and that our neighborhood can support. I think 12th has become kind of, it's a jewel of Nashville, I think. It's become a drawing thing, it's kind of like, it's a place you bring your friends, and it's, it's, it's part of what we all love about Nashville and we all appreciate about Nashville. And I think something like this doesn't represent what 12th is and what it, people love about it, and I think we need to protect that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Lee. I'm a 30-year resident at 1204 Linden Avenue. I'd like to echo the things that my neighbors have said and ask you to consider the documentation that we provided to you and to the council people, and vote no for this zoning change. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, applicant now has two minutes for rebuttal.
Hello, my name is Paula Foster, I live at 904 Halcyon Avenue, and I am the current president of the Board of the 12th South Neighborhood Association. I have been asked by the Neighborhood Association to read a position statement that we have about this development. The 12th South Neighborhood Board has closely followed a neighborhood conversation about the Bristol development at the Tabernacle Church site. That conversation has included multiple meetings, at which time the neighbors and developers have worked to address concerns raised by the proposed large residential development. The Board supports the Tabernacle Church and its desire to move their church to a more desirable location that will better serve their membership and use the value of the, tend to use the value of their current property to facilitate that move. We've been impressed by the churches and the developers' efforts to create a project that addresses concerns raised about traffic and scale, including the recent shift from four to three stories. Likewise, we have been impressed by the neighbors' efforts to communicate their concerns. We hope that Bristol will continue to work with the neighbors to make sure this is a project that can serve the churches' needs as well as the needs of the neighborhood. Thanks.
I'll be factual in my closing comments and rebuttal. First of all, there's a proposed UDO for this area. My client's proposal is consistent with the major elements, the height, the mass, and the street-facing of that UDO. Secondly, it's consistent, repeating again, with the Nashville Next proposal for this area. There's a number of people here that are supportive of this proposal, I'm asking them to raise their hands. We are aware of the agenda today, we're aware that you got on the agenda, we didn't line people up to say the same thing repeatedly, but they're here, their comments are felt. We've also sent more than 300 letters in support to Council Lady Sandra Moore. I'd also ask you to evaluate this. It wasn't my client that evaluated this proposal. We turned the proposal in, it goes through the vetting process that all of you are familiar with all the time. We did not evaluate it and say, this is a good idea, it's a bad idea. It was evaluated by the professionals within Metro Government, those in the planning staff, those at Public Works, those at the different agencies, all of whom recommended approval. So as far as the issues before this planning body, and you are all totally familiar, this is a planning body that makes a recommendation to the Metro Council where a legislative call is made. So I'm urging you from a planning perspective, every planner that has looked at this and made a recommendation on the staff has recommended approval. The staff has done it, policy and the zone change. So I urge you to consider that, again, my client didn't say this was a good idea, but I urge you that this is a matter that ought to go to the legislative body. It ought to be recommended for approval by this body as a planning matter. That's the issue before you today. Is it appropriate planning? I submit to you that it is. Finally, with respect to the legislative body, Council Lady Moore has been great. She's been tremendously giving of her time to every side in this issue, attended a number of meetings. It'll be her call and the other members of the Metro Council when it gets there. But from a planning perspective, it should be submitted favorably forward. It takes six votes for affirmative vote on the policy, we urge you to do that today. Vote for the policy and the zone change. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Clear, the public can enclose. The commissioners will discuss both 1A and 1B, and then the separate motions and separate votes on 1A, and then a separate one on 1B. Councilman Hunt.
You know, I was just listening to all the comments, and Mr. White said, and I'm going to present a different perspective in why I'm saying what I'm saying. One of the things I heard that there was, is changed the way of life for many, and that is true. It has changed the way of life for many, for a lot of years. I understand both sides of this issue. The residents appear to not want certain types of development, but they're not against the church selling. I have to say that I remember the former pastor, Reverend Hunt, no relation to Walter Hunt, said to me in a conversation, I knew him very well, because everybody thought we was canned, but we weren't, said 20 years ago that the church did not want any development. And the reason he didn't want any development, because of some of the same thing I just saw right here on this sheet, and what the sheet, the lady lived on, Virtue Wood, said was too much for the space. Reverend Hunt said that 25 years ago. And what I'm saying is, I know things change, and he didn't think there was enough room, and currently there's, there's traffic, and I saw the sign, the picture a while ago, traffic congestion, and that was out of control, and it's bad for the entire community. And now, that was predicted 25 years ago, and I'm telling you, I sat down and listened to the guy, because he fought selling that church for a lot of years. And I believe to this day, the only reason it is being sold is because he died. And because of that, he didn't die? He didn't die?
He did die. That's not other sound like he did die.
Tabernacle Church. Well, what I'm saying is, that church, the pastor of that church, right there on 12th Avenue, where it forks, saying that there's not enough space for the kind of development was being proposed. So what I'm saying is, I understand both sides of this particular issue, and I'm hoping that maybe, within the rules and the guidelines and the policies, that both sides could get together and probably work out some kind of, of proposal that would be happy to both sides. It may not be, not be possible, I don't know. But I do know about the history of that church, and that's, I lived in that community for quite some time, and that's why you're not asking about that. I'm through, done.
He's got the floor, I mean, he...
So he has a right to ask the audience a question.
Just saying, I've made my comments, and I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
Can I just get one, I guess, point of clarification on the project? Under the existing zoning, I mean, I see that the, there's a total of eight lots, 10 units, but then we also have the commercial service piece. Do we have any idea how many units could actually be accommodated, as is?
The, our eight portion of it would accommodate approximately eight lots, 10 units, with two duplex, or two duplex lots. The commercial portion is about 0.3 acres of the total 1.89 acres, and so that would have to be, the total is 1.89, and the commercial portion of it's 0.31.
Okay, okay. And then I guess the next question I had was more on the policy side. And I was reading through, just, residential corridor policy is a new policy under Nashville Next, is that correct?
Under the CCM.
Okay, under the revised.
Right, when we did the translation, we applied, well, we didn't, we changed it to Neighborhood Evolving.
Okay.
But the residential corridor policy is in CCM, it just has not been applied in this area until Nashville Next.
Okay, okay. Because as I'm reading through, you know, I'm struggling a little bit, as it says, "compatible with the general character of urban neighborhoods as characterized by development pattern, building form, land use, and associated public realm, and that move vehicular traffically efficiently while accommodating sidewalks likewise and mass transit." I don't see how we can accommodate bikes and mass transit and vehicular traffic efficiently on that stretch of 12th South with any more development. I think that's already a fairly, I mean, so I'm actually just questioning the application of that policy to that area. With the project specifically, I do think that it fits consistently with some of the new development that's happened on 12th South, but the amount of it just does feel to me like it's not consistent with the general flow of that street. I mean, the projects, as one of the speakers represented, the projects, the new projects that have gone into date have been much smaller and flowed with, and yet still created a significant increase in density on that street. But this just feels to me like it's significantly bigger. I think this would be appropriate on the other side of Wedgewood, coming down into 12th, you know, coming down into the Gulch area, but I'm, I think I agree with the neighbors that this just feels like too much for, for a small space. I totally support the church's desire to sell. I think that this property is definitely primed for some type of redevelopment, more than what's currently in place, but I just can't see going to this number of units. So that's, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess one of the things that I'm unclear about is, is the, is the, how we analyze policy amendments right now. We have a proposal here that is in direct conflict with our current policy, which is why they're trying to amend it. They can't build it without a policy change. And, and it's being recommended for approval by staff because it might be appropriate in terms of a non-adopted policy we might adopt in the future. Is that sort of it? Maybe, Rick, could you help me with that?
Yeah, we're operating under the direction the Planning Commission gave us. When you put in a moratorium on any future policy amendments, you ask the staff to provide the commission with an analysis based on the current policy and based on the draft policy, and make a recommendation based on both or either.
So the moratorium, what you told me never to use that word, yeah?
This was a moratorium on any, any plan amendment, this was, this was, that was a moratorium.
But this is a plan amendment.
Correct. What you stated was that, that you wanted to consider it based on both of the plans, so, yeah. I guess this plan amendment was actually filed beforehand, wasn't it?
This was filed before that, so there is a plan amendment that was actually filed with this application.
Yeah, yeah. The direction, though, was to present you, I mean, you could do it without the plan amendment under the, the current policy. I mean, the current, you could do it under your current direction to consider both policies. We simply provided that because they'd follow the plan.
Right, and I would also like to point out that there were special policies from the 12th South DNDP that in Nashville Next were proposed to be carried for, forward, but with their application, they asked to remove, such as the recommendation that the rezoning should be consistent with the RM15 density, which would not meet their project. So, that's how, it's slightly different than what staff was proposing with Nashville Next.
It's a little complex for me, I guess, to carry all that in my mind. I really, I really thought that, that this close to, to the Nashville Next vote, perhaps modifications and then vote, that we would not be doing a lot of rezoning that's contrary to what's currently there as a plan. I was also struck by Mr. White's early comment in talking about how there had been thought given to housing affordability and things like that, and that due efforts were made, due diligence was made to think about that, but that we are just not set up for it, quote unquote. We're not set up on the city side to, to have an enforceable policy there. And so what we have here is what I think has been described by both sides as luxury apartments, which is kind of not, doesn't really speak to me of housing affordability. And this, and I'm not sure the neighbors would want to hear this, but in my mind, an appropriate rezoning would, would address that to some degree, as a matter of, of what's good for this city and, and moral correctness. So I'm, on the other hand, I have been through what seemed to be disruptive potential developments that Mr. White and Jeff have proposed and, and gotten approval for, and it's turned out to be very, very fine, very hopeful. So they, they have, some of these folks have track records of making things work well, although it was somewhat helped out by the fact that a church went into that property, ironically, not moving out. So I'm, I'm, it's a very tough position for this church, and I certainly do not think they should be hamstrung in their efforts to do what they think's right for their church. I just, I think, I think it's too much, I think it's, it's not a timely proposal in the light of where we are and the city's discussion of Nashville Next, which I know would probably approve of this if we adopted as is now. And frankly, I just think, it's one thing to turn down what, what can be done as a matter of right because they didn't do the best thing possible, it's another thing to be changing the rules so they can take away potential affordable housing areas, at least in part, at least in some kind of a rational way of looking at it. So I'm, I'm not a fan of this, of the policy change or the rezoning.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank both sides and neighbors for coming down, as part of the process. I know it can be complicated and frustrating sometimes, but I do appreciate everyone coming down for that. There were several questions that a lot of the citizens asked that I think I need a little more clarification on. And the first is sewage infrastructure and then, then the water pressure, just in this area in general. Is there somebody from the water department here that could, is Steve here? Anybody?
Here he is.
Oh, there he is. There he is. See, I knew he was here. Could, could you possibly enlighten us about some of the sewage flooding issues and, and the water pressure?
Actually, I cannot do that. I am a Metro Water employee, but I'm only in stormwater, so I could only help you out with the stormwater. So unfortunately, I'm not able to tell you about any water pressure. All I could tell you is that it looks like Water Services has recommended approval on this.
Okay. But I guess my question is, is if, if, if these things are happening in the area, that I would like to get an answer, because there is going to be, in this area, a lot more development, this particular project, I'm, you know, struck by, I'm not sure if it's, it's too dense or not, but if the infrastructure is a problem in the area, this area is very popular, and I know that there'll be more development. So I think that, you know, me personally, I would like, as a planning commission, before you can make a planning decision, that you have to have supporting infrastructure.
Right, and Water Services is a part of our review process, and Water Services, which is also water and sewer, has recommended preliminary, has recommended approval of this preliminary plan. Detailed water and sewer plans would be required with the final.
And so the final, we would get, we would make sure that there's enough water pressure for the project to move forward. Okay, I just want the citizens to know that we don't go into these projects without the proper infrastructure in place. So there was another question about blasting, and I guess, on the blasting piece, if the staff could help me on a final, or getting approval to blast, is that fire marshal? Could somebody just maybe educate us and the citizens just a little bit about, just overview that process?
Yeah, I typically, I believe it's the state fire marshal that they would have to work with to gain approval. with to gain approval of, before they can do any blasting. And so there is a process by which they work with the state fire marshal to get permits before they can blast. And the applicant might be able to shed some more light on that if they've done that on other, other cases.
Other projects, there's a maximum that they can blast probably. Okay. Okay, I just, there were a lot of questions that the citizens had asked about that, and thank you for that, that clarification. And then the other was, there was a question about the, the traffic study. Was there a recent traffic study done? Public Works did review that, and there is someone from Public Works.
Devin Doyle, Metro Public Works. There was a traffic study that was conducted by RBM and Associates. It was originally turned in in January of 2015 and modified, revised, I think, in February as some of the unit counts changed.
Okay. I'd heard 2011 or something, and I was like, that's definitely probably, okay, so there was a traffic study. And then what was the result of the traffic study in the?
Well, it basically, the, the study indicated that total traffic increases, like daily volumes, would be in the neighborhood of about 900 to 1,000 trips, that's entering and exiting total. It showed some slight increase in delays on the side streets, which is typical, you know, in the, in the absence of things like traffic signals or always stops, that's, that's very typical on your, your side street approach or star terrier. So I don't recall any changes in level of service, just slight increases in delay time.
Okay, because I'd heard some people saying different things, that it was going to really change the level of service in the area, and that just, that's not true?
That's not what this study indicated.
Well, you know, I'm going to listen to the, to the rest of the commissioners. Obviously, when you have, you know, a few single-family lots going to over 100 units, that's a large project. So I'm, I'm interested to hear the other commissioners. Thank you.
Jeff?
I want to continue the traffic and parking question. Mr. White, if I could avail your time real quickly. On a relative basis, the number of existing parking spaces in the church lot and the number of existing church members on the road. Ms. Haines, I can't answer that. I think Mr. Heitz or someone, the pastor, can probably answer that if you would allow him to do that.
Sure.
I'm not familiar with that. Thank you.
As far as the church role is concerned, we have about 250 members. We have 94 parking spaces at, at this particular time.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. White, number of unit mix between one and two bedrooms of the 158 units? She knows.
111 one-bedroom, 47 two-bedroom.
Basically 75% are one units. And the total number of parking spaces in the garage?
185 required.
All right. I happen to agree with Jessica. I tend to support development, and in this particular case, I think this project is too dense on this site, and I'm not in a position to support this.
Derek?
I'll be quick, because I agree with my colleagues. I think that density is indeed an issue. Secondly, I think that will bring about traffic concerns. Thirdly, I do believe that this project, the flow, it's not congruent with the immediate area, going from what it is now to what's being proposed. I think this is too great of a jump for this particular area. And, and I guess from a big picture perspective, this is something that we have dealt with and will continue to deal with, is basically our infrastructure needs as we continue to grow in Nashville and add more buildings, more facilities. Matter of fact, this week, I was at the Tennessee City Managers Association, their conference, spring conference, and this can, we had a speaker yesterday, and this is a growing issue that was discussed by a professional in this particular area. And I know that there are tools out there that are available to, to ease the traffic issues, but to implement some of those, and to, today, you will not see immediate relief. So from a big picture standpoint, I mean, this is something that's causing me some major concern, and I'm hearing on a regular basis. Just spoke with a lady from Atlanta and said, one of the reasons she moved away from Atlanta is because of the growth that was going on and the inferior infrastructure to accommodate the growth. And here we are in Nashville, and she's saying it seems like Atlanta, it's starting to seem like Atlanta to her. So again, I know that's a little off track, but we've got to find some ways to address these issues, to, to get some immediate relief if we're going to continue to allow big facilities and, and buildings and structures and this development to, to proceed. To make a long story short, I am not in favor of this, and I don't plan on voting for it. I think it's too big for the area, but we need to look at the big picture in terms of infrastructure needs as it relates to a lot of the development that's occurring. Thank you.
Andre.
Well, I thought I was imagining that I might be rare in saying that I wasn't going to support the policy, but I'm surprised, I'm glad. But I had a couple of points that I wanted to make that are a little bit different. I agree with a lot of things we've talked about, but I want to say a couple of things that are different because I think I want to show also what we think we might want on a site like this. I think we do want development, we do want something, but I think the point that bothered me the most when I first saw it was that there's no retail on the ground floor enlivening the streetscape and the true walkability to have a place to go and to serve the needs of all these people in the neighborhood around. And if we want people not to always have to get in their car and create traffic problems, they have to have services and places to go. And I think that the, the successful retail that has been along that street already has indicated that that, that can work on a narrow street. It has to be a neighborhood-oriented type business so that it's, it fits into this area. And to that point, I wanted to ask, could you show the policy map? I wanted to see, I thought I saw that it was, from the map, I can see the grays are sort of similar, but I thought it was T4 neighborhood evolving.
The current.
The current policy.
Right.
Which to me would allow, if you stayed within that policy, you could still have a combination of residential development with some retail and be.
No, evolving is residential-only policy.
Oh, okay. All right, well, then I'm totally, okay, I thought that it would mean that it could change to include commercial. Okay, well, then that would be a policy I'd want to change, I think. I think that after the, after 12th widens, it's going to, the character will change as you go toward Wedgewood, and that that might invite a bigger denser thing with projects. Belmont certainly has lots of residents. I think that is a different place than this, this section of 12. So I would, I would almost think that it would fit more in with the park south of Lawrence, and the properties across the street might match it, so you could have a little commercial and some less dense residential, but still a mix. So that was something I was thinking, also the, the crossing the sidewalks, interrupting the pedestrian traffic was another point. And then I also noticed that the councilwoman had said that she felt like after these discussions, that she felt like the new proposed UDO actually needed more work. And so I think it'd be interesting to see, you know, how that evolves. It's a proposed idea. So all of those reasons, plus a lot of what we talked about, would lead me to not be willing to change the policy at this point.
Is there a motion? Mr. Chairman, I'd move we disapprove the plan amendment. Second. Motion second, this is on item 1A. It's a motion second to do, to disapprove the plan amendment. All in favor? Any opposed? So that negates any motion on 1B.
Still need to make a motion, it's being contrary, yeah, disapproved, contrary to policy.
Need a motion on 1B then, that is contrary to the existing plan. I so move. Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Ready for item number four?
Let me say something, Mr. Chairman, just because there was so much discussion on it, and I would like the, the commission to understand kind of where you're at. The policy, I think the residential, the, the urban residential corridor policy is probably appropriate here. That does not mean that the massing of this building is appropriate in this location. I want, because the, the residential corridor is probably, is going to be on that wider portion, too. It may have been appropriate here with a smaller set of, of buildings that, that maintained a rhythm. So I just didn't want you to think that if you approve residential corridor, that this is the only solution. You have to look at, as you know, on others, you have to look at the specifics of it, and so a smaller mixed-use building may have been appropriate as opposed to what was being proposed.
That was a question I had, because if I read the plan right, I thought it looked like about 350 feet. So is that, you've got to walk the length of a football field, and it's a, it's all residential, and that was, I felt like, didn't fit the rhythm and the character of that area.
Right, there's two things, you're looking at the character policies, and then is, is the, are they appropriate in terms of the way it's applied with the specific building?
If I could have just also another moment, because I want to make a point of clarification on policy changes. And it's not that we, that the commission can't, obviously, because you did tonight, consider policy changes, but that we will actually bring our, have those applied altogether. We'll bring them all back as a housekeeping amendment at once when we do the Nashville Next. So if you were to have agreed with the policy changes, then what we would do is bring those back when Nashville Next is adopted with all the policy changes included in Nashville Next. So I, I didn't want to leave the impression that there's no opportunity to come before the commission for policy changes. You can do it, but just procedurally, we're going to do those all as a housekeeping amendment, if, if there are any between here and there. We'll do those at the time that we bring Nashville Next back.
Ready for item number four.
Okay, item number four is Hart Lane Cottages. This is a request to rezone from RS10 to SP to permit up to 26 residential units. I'm sorry, that should have, that number should have been updated there. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The property is located on the north side of Hart Lane, east of Dickerson Pike. It's approximately 4.59 acres in size. Current zoning is RS10, and it is adjacent to property that is also zoned RS10 and CS. The existing, the current policy is T4 urban neighborhood evolving. The growth and preservation concept map does not propose any changes. It will remain as T4 neighborhood evolving. The plan proposes 26 units, all are single-family detached style units. Two units are proposed along Hart Lane here, and those two units will maintain the existing setback along Hart Lane. There are sidewalks proposed along Hart Lane as well as all of the internal streets. There is a stub street provided to allow for a possible connection to the existing east-west street, which you can see here. So there's a stub street that's being provided here that can provide for a potential future connection, if this property was to develop at some point in the future, to the existing street. Architectural standards have been provided that include a primary entrance fronting the street, minimum glazing standards, prohibition on certain materials, raised foundations, et cetera. The plan supports several critical planning goals in that it is utilizing an underutilized urban lot that has existing infrastructure. Sidewalks are being provided both along Hart Lane and in the internal streets to create a more walkable neighborhood, and it's providing a housing option that doesn't currently exist in the area. This is a shot of the existing site conditions. And again, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, as it is consistent with the policy and meets several critical planning goals.
Thank you. So item is open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes, and you may keep two back for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michael Garrigan, 516 Heather Place. I'm a civil engineer with Dale &amp; Associates, and I know it's going to be a long meeting, so the reason this is not on consent, I guess, is my fault. To my knowledge, no one is here in opposition. To give you a little background, we met with the community on March 19th, and after a couple hours of discussion, Council Lady Bennett and the neighbors asked me to leave the room so they could discuss, and when I came back in, they let me know that they were fully supportive of the project with three specific requests. The first one was that the alleyway along the west property line be buffered from the commercial. The initial thought was to put it adjacent to the commercial so that it could be used by the commercial, but they know the neighborhood better than we did, and they were concerned about the foot traffic that would open up kind of in the interim. We agreed to that, and that's been shown on this plan. The second request they had is we had townhomes. We had some townhomes on the previous plan. They, they didn't want any townhomes, and they asked that we come back and replace those and keep that single-family detached two-story cottage feel, and, and we've done that and lost units as well. The third point, which I guess is the point of contention, was that Council Lady Bennett nor the neighbors wanted the main road to stub to the east property line and connect, I'm sorry, connect to Convizer Drive, which was shown in those two previous slides, potentially in the future. Quite frankly, we're impartial. I think that the planning staff, you know, is typical with, with policies and connectivity. I understand their standpoint. I also do understand the neighborhood's standpoint, but Karen couldn't be here tonight, but she did, I did get her, I made it very clear that I wanted to make sure I wouldn't speak out of turn when I said, this to her is not a deal killer to the neighborhood, it's not a deal killer. She did, however, request that I pull this off consent, just so that the conversation can be had as to what is the necessity of the extension of Convizer. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Roy Dale with Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place. Michael has to go to another meeting tonight, and so I'm just speaking in the van. You have a question, in case Michael needs to leave, I'm here to answer those. But as Michael mentioned, we do have a lot of community meetings. A lot of times, we come up with agreements of things that we'll present to the commission. It keeps a lot of people from attending here, quite honestly. It saves a lot of time. Michael pulled this off consent just so he could more or less tell you what the community would say. We've changed the plan in two ways, which they wanted, and I think they would prefer there not be connectivity. Like Michael said, it's the commission's decision. Karen's going to accept whatever you come up with, but we were asked to present that to you. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Declare the public hearing closed. You've got two minutes for rebuttal. Obviously, you don't need that. This was to be on consent. The applicant pulled it off. Is there a motion to approve this, or do you want to discuss it?
I move approval.
Motion second, approval.
That, are we addressing the connectivity with your motion? Or does that assume the staff recommendation?
Assuming, I was going, assuming the staff recommendation with the connectivity.
Okay. Motion second, approved with staff recommendation. Honor.
Just want to maybe ask the applicant a question, just, just so I can understand. So the council lady doesn't want the connectivity, and you, and you understand the community doesn't want the connectivity?
That's correct. And I will say, there, there's been a lot of discussions. Council Lady Bennett and Lisa and I even met with Bob to talk about, you know, you've got that vacant piece to the west. Could, I think a lot of this has to do with the name of the street. Nobody's fond of Convizer.
That's a council, council issue.
So, so could that ultimately bend and go, you know, do south to Hart Lane and provide the same amount of connectivity as would be proposed if this had Convizer? as would be proposed if this had Convizer going through? But I think, in the same token, we've all been in that situation. I lived by Opry Mills when it's Christmas time, and you really wish you could turn right and left and get back where you were going, but, so, again, we're impartial. We see it both ways. There's really not an opinion either side from the applicant nor from us.
Thanks. So if the council lady, this is a question, I guess, for staff, if the council lady is opposed to that, and it goes to public hearing, she could just bring a different plan?
Well, this is an SP. The Planning Commission, if you approve the recommendation on the floor, it would be approval with all of, all the recommendations or disapproval without them. And so if she changed it, then it would be a disapproval.
Can I point out something, then? If they were to change it, one thought I had, I think I'm, I understand and want the connectivity that we're talking about. If it were not to be connected, my wish would be that the roadway would then not be a public right-of-way, and that it and the alleys might be reduced in size, because they seem large, they're accommodating the idea that it might be a public right-of-way for a road. But if it weren't, I think I'd rather see it be smaller.
And one thing I wanted to point out was that really, this does not connect to anything at this point. The decision to connect will come when the neighboring property to the east comes in, and so this is no different than the other two subdivisions to the east that have no connections. It's just, it does set it up for a future connection.
I think it should be set up that way, and I think the road should be set up for a public right-of-way. But if it's, if it's going to be not connected at all with no potential for future connectivity, and they're going to build a house right there or something, I always think that if it's just a dead-end subdivision, I would rather see the streets narrower and the alleyways narrow, because then they wouldn't be public streets anymore, and they wouldn't need to be taking up so much room in the development. I mean, I don't know if we could send it forward with that, too. You know, we, I'd like to agree with the staff recommendation, approve the connectivity, approve it as is on the plan. If the councilwoman were to change it, I'd like to recommend that it be, the road sizes be reduced if they're going to be dead-end private streets.
Yes, my, that is one we haven't really done before, something like that. Because I think what would happen is it would be, I mean, we do believe in connectivity and future connectivity, I think, on this, this Commission, and if we send it up with the sort of message that we're for connectivity, but maybe, but if she were to, if she's going, I think we're inviting, inviting a stronger possibility that there'd be 27 votes to prove it as is with them.
And I think that's a change that we could work with the applicant on at final site plan, if that does occur at council, that we could work with Public Works and the applicant to reduce the size of that street.
So, so I guess, as a principle, obviously, we're for connectivity. It makes sense, and that's a general rule, and we almost always vote for connectivity. I think the question is here, we voting for something that we know is likely going to change, would a deferral change the process? Is there a bill filed? Is there, because I'm looking at this, and I'm not sure, this plan does anything for you with regard to connectivity? You know? You know, I mean.
Allows for the future.
It allows for, you know, a few, maybe a few homes to be connected, but it's not really, it's just putting everybody right back on, out on Hart Lane. So I don't know that I would be opposed to a different plan that didn't connect. I don't know, but that's not what we're reviewing today. So I guess from a procedural perspective, is there an issue with a deferral, a deferral, or?
A bill has not been requested yet.
Is there, from an applicant's perspective, any?
I just wanted to say, I think there's been a lot of discussion, assuming that this may end up as a disapproved bill because there's an amendment introduced, but once again, I hope that I'm not speaking out of turn, but Council Lady Bennett just wanted to have the conversation vetted. She did not want it to affect the project, and I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't believe that she would want to change that stub road and eliminate the access through the council process. I don't, I don't think that's the case.
You could look at, to the west, if eventually if that warehouse ever redeveloped, could tie back into Sunset Circle and connect Dickerson, and then it would all be connected to another road. I don't know. I'm just, we don't know at this point.
Okay, we've got a motion second approved with staff recommendations, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ready for item number eight.
All right, so this is item eight on your agenda. Haney Central Park, re-subdivision of Lot 86. This is a request to create four lots at the southeast corner of Glenview Drive and South 11th Street. Staff recommending, sorry, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The property is currently zoned RS5. The policy here is urban neighborhood maintenance, and as such, the proposed lots must meet the infill lot compatibility analysis per the subdivision regulations.
Let me interrupt just a minute. Let me ask the Commissioners, we've got seven here now. We need at least six. I think there's one or two that has to leave at a certain time. Andre, you're here for the entire, Derek, you're here? Leave at seven? Okay, it's an hour. Greg, you're here? What time you need to leave? You're here? Okay. Okay, okay, go ahead. We're okay.
All right. So the policy here is urban neighborhood maintenance, and as such, the proposed lots must meet the infill lot compatibility analysis per the subdivision regulations. So Lot 1 meets for both frontage and lot size. However, there are no available lots to which proposed lots two through four can be compared. Here we have the plan. They're proposing four lots with one lot fronting Glenview Drive and three lots fronting South 11th Street. The existing house on Lot 1 is to remain. The applicant has added conditions to make the subdivision harmonious. Those include limiting the access for all the lots to the alley, including a joint access off the alley for the units in the front there, as you can see. Also, they're proposing to limit building height to two stories and 35 feet. The proposal does meet one critical planning goal, and in conclusion, staff finds that Lot 1 meets the infill compatibility criteria and that the conditions proposed by the applicant do provide for the harmonious development of the community. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditions.
Okay, thank you. So items open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes, and you can hold two back for rebuttal if you'd like.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Brandon Burnett with Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place. We are representing the owner and the potential developer of this property. I would point out that this was initially a consent agenda item, but was removed by four neighbors. After conversations with the neighbors and Councilmember Westerholm here in the lobby, we've discussed their concerns, which have to do with traffic on the alley and South 11th Street. What we've assured them is that tonight, we will ask the Commission to either approve with a condition to extend the private access easement through Lot Number 2 all the way to Glenview, or in lieu of that, a deferral until May 14th. Thank you for your time and consideration.
You know, when it always.
I just want to mirror what Brandon said. In essence, if this condition is accepted, there'll just be one curb cut for all four of these houses on Glenview. And again, this was in an effort to try to streamline a process. We met with the people that were here that had concerns. Their concerns were not the size of lots, the shape of lots, the houses. They were just concerned that people would have to go all the way up Glenview, down South 11th Street, and down an alley in order to access, access the site. I think they lived adjacent to the alley, and they would just prefer that this alley or access to the site extend all the way to Glenview, and that's it. And so they left based upon our promise that we would present this to you and ask you to accept the subdivision with that modification, or if you're not comfortable with that, to defer this, but not to approve the original plan that we submitted. Thank you.
Any more speaking for your, you've got two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Saying that, declare the public hearing closed, and Andre?
Let me, let me make sure I understand, because I don't know that we can respond just right off. If I understand it, basically, you want to extend the easement to Glenview with all, with, the effect being all access comes off Glenview onto that easement as opposed to off the alley.
Correct.
Right. And so what currently does not have an access on Glenview would have an access on Glenview for all four lots. And I just, I don't know how that works on Glenview, so.
But it would go all the way to the alley also. So you could, it's a through, you could access it from Glenview or the alley, is my understanding.
That's right.
It's just extending the alley.
I'm sorry, I should probably be speaking up here.
No, you're correct. They just wanted there to be ease, access to the site so you weren't forced to go all the way to the alley. It seemed reasonable. The council member was also here. He supported that as well. I told them, you know, you may not be comfortable making, recommending approval of this without staff's comments or ability to look at this. So that's why either we're asking you to approve it as we're proposing, or to defer it, and then we'll vet it out with staff, and we'll just be back up here at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think Bob has to make the call, though. You know, y'all have to make it down there, because I just wanted to make sure we understood what Greg.
Generally, we want to see all the access, when there is an alley, we want to see access from that alley. Now, whether that goes, if it goes all the way through and sort of functions like a new alley, that's what we would have to look at, and I haven't been to the site to see it and see if the topography works or anything like that.
If I could make a suggestion, in lieu of deferring it, that you approve it subject to staff review, and if we find that there's an issue, we'll bring it back.
So move. There's another alley that opens onto Glenview behind the three, the houses that are across the street on 11th. Just as far as, you know, there is another alley that opens to Glenview, if that's a positive, or I just want to point that out, that that might make sense.
Derek? Greg? I'm ready.
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Oh, Andre made it.
Yeah, I'll second her motion.
Katie, so the mistake of motion is to.
My motion is to approve it on the condition that staff review doesn't find a problem with it, and if they do, it'll come back with their recommendation.
Got a motion second.
And could I just clarify? And that motion is to approve with an easement all the way to Glenview, all the way through from the alley.
So you can drive through the, you could drive from the alley to Glenview or Glenview to the alley, but it's a connected, all the way across the back of all three lots.
Got a motion second all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item 12 is a request to rezone property located on 16th Avenue in the Music Row area. Property is outlined in red. The request is specifically to rezone the property from its current zoning of office residential OR 20 to specific plan to permit an office building. This is aerial of the site. The property is currently vacant. Staff recommendation is to disapprove or defer. This is another view of the site. And here's one more from the street level. So as you may recall, February 12th this year, the Planning Commission basically asked that all decisions on Music Row within the area highlighted in a blue be deferred or disapproved. This application was actually submitted the day of that meeting, which was also a filing deadline. While staff has recommended approval based on the request of the Commission, we are also, as noted in your report, find that this, this request is a little different than the ones that we've seen in the past that kind of prompted your decision in February. The property is currently vacant. Previous request typically dealt with several lots that required that those homes be removed, so the structures would be removed. In this case, nothing is being removed, this lot is vacant. This is much smaller scale than the projects we've seen. Most projects we've seen is mixed use, high-density retail as well as office uses. This request is just for a single office building, so the scale is much smaller. The existing zoning permits the office use today. And the other thing, and that's, I think is the primary reason that this is a lot different, is that it is within the conservation overlay district, and the project has been approved by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission. So they've seen all details of the project, including elevations. The existing zoning is OR 20. It permit up to four dwelling units or a maximum of 7,666 square feet of floor area. This just shows you the South Music Row Conservation Overlay District. The subject property is on the edge of the district on 16th, and it's, I can't, I can't see that very well, but it's the one highlighted in blue. So this is the site plan. So the plan calls for 9,391 square feet of office. It would be in 20, in two stories with a 41-foot height from the grade. This was again approved by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission in March. Access to the site would be from the rear alley. There would be no vehicular access on the 16th. There would be pedestrian access. The plan calls for wider sidewalks and planning strips consistent with the metro, with the major and collective street plan. So this is the rendering of the site, and again, this was what was approved by the Historic Zoning Commission. So the variations that this SP is permitting, so, I mean, it's, it's very close to what OR 20 would permit, so the things that it would, would permit, that's not permitted today, is increased floor area, so it permit about 1,700 square feet of additional floor area. Increases the impervious surface ratio from 0.7 to 0.74, so that's how much hard scape they can have on the property. It permits a decreased rear yard setback from what's called, what's permitted today is 20 feet. It's going from 11 feet, and it's also important that the Historic Zoning Commission could adjust the setback requirements without doing an SP. And then the reduced parking, perimeter parking landscape strip, where it's required to have 2.5 feet, and they're not proposing one. And one thing to keep in mind is that this is structured parking underground, so perimeter landscaping strip, I'm not even certain if codes would require that, but, but that is a requirement that's in the code. I just don't know how it would translate to a structured parking that's half, half underground. So the policy is district office concentration. The proposed use is consistent with that policy. The growth, preservation concept map, which is with Nashville The growth and preservation concept map, which is with Nashville Next, there are no changes proposed. It remains. And again, staff is recommending deferral, disapproval based off their previous request to defer or disapprove all rezonings in the Music Row area. However, we do think that this one is slightly different than the ones that you've considered before.
Items open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes, and keep two back for rebuttal.
Good afternoon. My name's Elliot Kyle. I'm a principal with the applicant, Comvent Place Partners. Just a quick overview to piggyback on some of the things you just heard. We are local developers that specialize in small urban infill projects in and around Nashville. We've got several projects in our portfolio, but, but took the opportunity when we, we could acquire this land to do something in Music Row. You know, we were excited about it because we, we recognize that, you know, we're, we're developing something that would be within the scale and aesthetic of the existing area. And we could deliver, you know, sort of new, efficient Class A office space, which there's not a lot of in the area. With some of the existing properties that are there, we would be able to put a little different spin on it. And we'd be able to do it without raising any buildings, which we thought was a very rare opportunity. You just don't see raw land in the area. And again, it was within a scale that was consistent with the types of projects we typically looked to do. We do have our architect here today, Jamie Pfeffer, who has come up with this plan we're very excited about, if you have any questions about that. As we got into the plan, we realized that functionally, due to, due to the topography of the site, we could build up to 9,400 square feet and park it. And again, as everyone knows, Music Row runs at, you know, occupancy levels on the office side of, of close to 96%, I think at last count. So we knew the demand would be there. So that's sort of what we were hoping to do. My partner has been incredibly diligent to be totally transparent with the neighborhood, to gain support, and sort of give everyone a very good sense of what we were doing, and how slight the variance would be with the SP versus what we were permitted currently. So we had several meetings, spoke to a lot of people most immediately affected by this, and had nothing but support and appreciation for the process that we undertook to do that. And I think I'm going to turn that over to my partner, McLean Towery, who's going to talk a little bit more specifically about some of the support we have received. Thank you.
Hi, my name is McLean Towery with Comvent Place Partners. I just wanted to share with you a letter written by Alice Raleigh, who is on the Etch Hill Village Neighborhood Association Board, or at least excerpts. "We live at 1,400 Villa Place. I serve on the neighborhood, excuse me, I serve on the board of our neighborhood association. And as you and the commission know, I spoke against a recent development at 1222 16th Avenue for a very specific and narrow issue that developers sought no public support, or excuse me, no public input, in spite of our very clear desire to be a part of the process of inappropriately integrating their building into our neighborhood. Today, I'm writing in my personal capacity as a neighbor and an observer of how you have conducted yourself throughout the process of seeking this zoning change. In December, you wrote to the board of Etch Hill Village Neighborhood Association asking to come meet with the neighborhood about your plans. We received two postcards as well as a letter related to this development. There were ample, thoughtful, and very clear process for public input. Frankly, no one came to your February meeting because, based on everything that had been provided, in such a manner, and open man, professional and open manner." Let's see. Thank you for what you, let's see, yeah, "Thank you for what you're doing to set a standard for positive relationships with neighbors and developers. I write in strong support of your SP zoning application and hope that the committee will approve your request to bring additional office space to Music Row." With that, we'll turn it over to Sean Henry.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street. Thank you for your attention to this matter tonight. Importantly, this application for this SP was filed on February 12, and it was filed by the deadline. And then that afternoon, at your four o'clock meeting, there was a proposal here in which you ultimately decided to impose a new policy for the Music Row area, and decided that maybe we should wait, you should wait, until there's further study about developments in this area until next year. But this application got in the door before that. And importantly, as pointed out, there's very little, very modest modifications being proposed by this SP relative to the existing OR 20 zoning, namely, the rear setbacks being reduced, gross floor areas being increased by about 1,700 square feet. But this is a vacant lot, and this lot's been vacant for 15 years. So the, the facts and circumstances here, we think certainly allow you, through your discretion, to consider this outside of, of the present policy that you're operating under. And one of them is the fact that this is a vacant lot, and it's been so for 15 years. We got a two-story scale here, very modest scale, office use only, no residential use. And this is a historic zoning, historic conservation zoning overlay piece of property that's been approved by the Historic Zoning Commission. We certainly have generated neighborhood support. You have two letters of support in your, in your file that you received. Mr. Marshall Hall is here in support of it, and I think he will speak on it. And ultimately, Council Lady Moore is going to make, make the ultimate decision of whether to push this type of rezoning through Metro Council and try to garner the support there. We think she will do that. We had a neighborhood meeting back in February, I think it was February 9, and no one from the neighborhood showed up at that meeting. And that's a testament to the fact that my clients have been very aggressive about attending neighborhood meetings, attending the, the Christmas party of the neighborhood, and really meeting with people as recently as this past Sunday, and talking with four particularly close property owners, and addressing their concerns. And we think everyone has been, has been satisfied. So we're certainly, we'll continue to meet with folks if necessary after this commission action. But again, if you look at the facts of this particular piece of property, this particular application, the policy that you have in place here would not seem to warrant being imposed because of the facts that we spelled out here. So we ask for your approval of this. It's certainly consistent with the Green Hills Midtown Community Policy. And, Mr. Chairman, we would enjoy two minutes for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Please come to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Marshall Hall. I live at 1025 Villa Place, and also own property at 1717 Villa Place, which is very near the, the property in question. I'm here to speak in favor of the project, as I believe it will add to the neighborhood in a very meaningful way. I watched with interest back a couple months ago when the moratorium was placed, and I was generally in support of that. I thought that when we're changing use dramatically, scale dramatically, things like that, that we need, we do need to take a step back and protect a landmark such as Music Row. However, I said generally support, because I think a soft moratorium would probably be the better way to, to put this, because there are still some lots that could be developed within current zoning, or minimal changes to current zoning, and still be consistent with scale and use that's along Music Row. And I think that this is one of those projects. This lot is currently empty, as has already been mentioned. It does not require any raising of an existing building or structure, and it's consistent with the, the use of Music Row, especially that, that portion of Music Row. Adding office space in the urban core helps combat urban, or combat sprawl, especially when you couple development along bus routes, along multimodal transit, such as bike lanes, which there's a bike lane that runs right along 16th Avenue. This is the definition of good infill development that's appropriately scaled for the neighborhood. As a resident of the neighborhood, we are actively seeking out ways to make our neighborhood walkable. We want it, we want it to be a truly live, work, play type of neighborhood. That includes places to live, places to eat, shop, entertain ourselves, and also places to work. This does provide for additional places of employment, and also provides some office space for those businesses that may be displaced by the development that's ongoing. Mr. Towery's been nothing but helpful in, in telling us what his plans are. I was first notified in December, so he, I speak very highly of him as a developer as well. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed, and we're ready for discussion. We've got two other items. After we get through with this one, and we're going to lose our quorum in 40 minutes, so we'll make commissioners aware of that. Jessica?
So I, I agree with what the speaker just said, that, that I think when we made this decision back in February, it was largely driven by the fact that we were going to see four existing properties raised in order to make, make room for a very significant new project. And as what's been clearly pointed out, this is a vacant property. It aligns nicely with the rest of the neighborhood. It appears that there's very good neighborhood support for it, and so I'm inclined to support it.
Hunter?
I wasn't at the Planning Commission meeting when we put the quote "moratorium" on Music Row. The next...
Let me just clear one thing up. The commission did not adopt a moratorium. It's in the press. It is not a moratorium. Anybody can develop any piece of property in accordance with their zoning. All the commission said was that they did not support or would support a rezoning request. So I just, that's for the public record more than anything, because everybody keeps saying it's a moratorium.
And that's why I went and watched the video immediately and realized that. However, I've heard from a number of folks in the development community that there's extraordinary lack of clarity on what our intent was here. And I think this, this case is an example of, of that. And I'm very supportive of this, passed the Historic Zoning Commission. But I, you know, I think we do need some clarity. And not since I've, for the eight years that I've been on this, seven years that I've been on this commission, have we ever put, you know, even an essential moratorium on development. And so I would love to entertain, whether it's tonight or not, but a conversation that would clarify how we're applying this policy that we put in place. Because to me, we have a process to go through and either approve or disapprove projects. We have policies in place, and we have Nashville Next, which has proposed policies in place. So I don't know why we can't review any proposal. We may turn it down, the council may turn it down, but I think it's our, it's our, you know, duty.
We didn't say we wouldn't review things. I mean, if I could make a stab at it, what we talked about was that the neighborhood that's been declared a national treasure is really working together. There's a neighborhood, newly formed neighborhood association for Music Row, there's a music industry coalition, there are business owners, there are tenants, there are residents, there are landowners, there are a mixed population of stakeholders that are all working together to try and create what they want to see the future of that area become. Keeping in mind the history, keeping in mind what the uses are today, but they were looking forward to what they wanted to find themselves as. And so in deference to that, as important a site is for, as it is for the whole city, an area, what we said is that we would entertain things like this one today. Things can come before us, but we were saying that we were likely not going to approve things that were radically changing things until we knew what that area was going to declare itself to be. That's my version.
I'd like to hear the staff's interpretation, because you're, you're the ones that are recommending a disapproval or...
Deferral.
...deferral. And we would need to understand how the staff is interpreting what we...
Okay, and I'm going to do this as quickly as I can, because we've got about 35 minutes before we lose quorum, and we got two more cases to hear, and they both have public hearings. So I'm going to say this as fast as I can. The way the staff is interpreting what the decision was by the commission was, is that any rezoning on Music Row starts with a presumption of disapproval for that rezoning, that that's the presumption. But as this case shows you, we still are going to accept applications if there's someone that wants to bring a rezoning before the commission. And we're still going to give you the same analysis that we would give you otherwise. But it, we have took, taken it as simply a signal to the development community that large-scale development on Music Row should pause long enough for us to make an evaluation of what assets want to be, the, the community wants to protect in Music Row, and then what development in the future is going to look like in Music Row. So it, it really is just that there's a presumption, and by the staff, that there's a disapproval. It's not going to change the information that we give to the commission. It does not change the opportunity for someone to come before the commission for a rezoning. It just simply is that the commission has asked us to start with that presumption. And so that's why we present it to you as a disapproval.
Could you also clarify...
I'm sorry?
Or a deferral.
Or a deferral. Correct.
Could you also clarify, because I don't know that it was completely defined by the commission, the boundaries of...
We, we have, yeah, there's a map that shows the, the boundary. I'll let you just label it, slow things down more there. Okay, so there's the boundary in front of you, and essentially, the 16th and 17th, and the, the alleys behind 16th and 17th, and all lots that are, all lots that front 16th and 17th. That, that's essentially the boundaries that, that we understood. Now, I will tell you that I've been a part of community discussions, community meetings on this issue since the, the commission took that position, and the community feels that it's, it's a different area, it's not that clear-cut, 16th and 17th. And that, that conversation continues. But we would really wait to define, this is the area that we're, we're applying what I just mentioned to. But what we will present the commission with as far as the suggested locations that should be protected, or what kind of policies should go in place to protect those, may be a different one at the, at the end of that public discussion.
I'm very aware of the time constraints, and I'm kind of familiar with this property. As a council member, I've put the overlay on from Almost Horton down to Wedgewood, and it's been very successful, and been a nice buffer between commercial and office and residential. But I, I don't think any of us actually in our perhaps broad discussion, the other meeting, ever anticipated trying to tell the development community, we can't, you know, you can't bring a change to us, particularly not in a, in an overlay district where there's design control and, and oversight like, like in this area, and particularly not where it's been vacant. So we may need, I'd like to ask that the staff maybe help us think at the beginning of next meeting about some of the other clarifications, because we want to be clear, and I think you're right. We could be much more clear to the broad community. But frankly, unless there's lots of discussion, I, as someone who sort of maybe got us into this a little bit, I, I would move approval of the staff recommendation based on, on the explanation of staff and...
Is the recommendation as to...
Well, they, I think they were saying, you're right. They were saying, based on what we said earlier, I would move we approve this because it, for the reasons stated in the staff analysis, that the changes from what they could do as a matter of right are minimal, and in this case, justified.
And does that motion include the conditions that are recommended by staff if approved?
That's what I meant to do. Yeah.
Yes. I'll second.
Got a motion second, another, another discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please. Item 16, I believe. We've got a quorum of six, so I would encourage all the commissioners to stay through the next two items.
Okay, I'm going to present item 18. Are you ready?
Go ahead.
Yep.
Item 16.
I'm sorry?
16.
16. I'm sorry, I said 18, 16. It's a request to rezone from R15 to RS15. Staff recommendation is to approve with a substitute or amendment to remove certain lots at key intersections to allow for a variety of housing units in the area, and disapproval without a substitute or amendment. The current zoning of the property is R15. The policy is T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance and conservation. The growth and preservation concept map has no change proposed. This area is currently all single-family residential units. There are no existing two-family in the area. Staff recommending, staff is recommending certain parcels to be removed. The parcels that staff is recommending to be, to be removed are highlighted in blue at key corners and intersections. There's about nine properties that staff is recommending to be removed. The, one of the reasons, one of the things that we looked at when we were choosing the lots to be removed was where the flood area goes through this area. And so you'll notice that all of the properties that we have chosen for removal are outside of those areas. Again, staff is recommending approval with a substitute or amendment to remove those certain lots that would allow for the possibility of housing units in the future, disapproval without that substitute or amendment.
This item's open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes, and we keep two back for rebuttal.
My name's Carl Kersey, and I live at 914 New Hall Lane, which is in, in the middle of the area, proposed downzoning area. My family has lived there since 2005, and I'm the president of the Warren Park...
Are you the applicant?
Yes, sir.
The council member, we have the council member as the applicant.
Okay. All right, well, I think she's going to speak at the end, so I can, if you want to...
I'll be at the end, sorry.
She's going to be at the end. I want to clear that...
Okay, go ahead, give them two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or is it, the head of association is five, or is it two?
If you're the applicant, if you're substituting for the applicant audition...
I know, I mean, I don't, Emily, tell me. No, Emily, tell me.
I'm sorry. What's the question?
Well, applicant...
The applicant goes first and gets 10 minutes.
Okay, I guess I'm technically the applicant, right? I filed the bill, okay. And you, and you want to give me 10 minutes, really?
Whoever claims is the applicant gets 10 minutes.
Okay, I claim as the applicant, and...
Or their supporters, you can transfer that.
All right. Why don't I just go ahead and introduce the supporter so they can give their presentation, and I'll just pull up the rear with a couple of minutes, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so follow those supporters and please stand. All right, so I guess I get two minutes, is that correct?
You get nine minutes, 27 seconds.
Okay.
An applicant does.
Like I said, I'm Carl Kersey, I live at 914 New Hall Lane, it's in the middle of this area. My family's lived here since 2005. I'm the president of the Warner Parts Community Association. The Warner Parts Community Association was founded in 2004. Mostly all we do is host picnics and so forth, but originally when we were founded, it was to, to give the residents a voice, and the community matters, and preserve the balance of development amenities and quality of life in the area. This issue has been on our meeting agenda for several years, since about 2013. It's been on the main agenda for at least three of our meetings, which have been fairly well-attended. You guys, I won't go through the details, but we've provided you the details of how we disseminated all the information about this, and how it was communicated to the neighborhood. We have 204 petitions out of 311 residences in that area that support the downzoning. And interestingly enough, seven of the nine corner lots that you guys have proposed for exemption, we have petitions from those residents that don't want to be exempted, they want to be downzoned to RS15. Warner Park Valley is a unique and diverse neighborhood, it's the only neighborhood I've ever lived in where I know all my neighbors, and mostly everybody on my street. The neighborhood represents a delicate balance, which is oftentimes hard to find in neighborhoods these days. And it was mentioned that there's no, it's true that there's no, nothing but single-family homes in that main area, but in the, in the area that is considered Warner Park Valley, we have over 600 units, which are in rental condos and retirement housing. We have about 400 single-family homes, about 100 of which that are already zoned RS15 because they were built slightly later than the core that we're looking at here. We're host, our cornerstone is St. Henry's Church and School. We also are host to the Gordon JCC, the Jewish Community Center, and their school. We have a nursing home, we have the Boost Athletic Club at the corner of our neighborhood, which is an asset, but also creates problems with stormwater management and traffic. We also host a portion of Music City Bike Way, and we're the gateway to Percy Warner Park. Emily Evans presented the idea of downzoning, I think around 2009 to us, because it's part of, we're in part of neighborhood maintenance. It also adheres to metro policy. The policy that promotes development is primarily, is primarily consistent with the existing development pattern. As is mentioned, there's no, there's nothing but single-family homes in this particular They're attached in multifamily units in adjacent areas. The rezoning would limit the potential for a variety of housing types within just this core area, which was also shown on one of the other slides, which is host to the Vons Gap Branch Creek, which runs down through the middle of that, which is part of the Richland Creek watershed, and is a nature habitat. It also prevents worsening of the stormwater problems already present. We have pretty archaic stormwater system, and additional roof surfaces and hardscape will make an existing problem worse. I believe Emily's gonna talk about how she's been trying to get us additional help with our stormwater management, but just the other week, when we had that quick spring storm, you know, we had near-flood level water in my backyard, which the creek runs through my backyard. Personally, I've spent upwards of 20 grand doing stormwater mitigation and repair to my house because of stormwater in the way, I'm kind of the downside of a hill. Our infrastructure doesn't really support keeping the zoning the way it is. We really do need to downzone so that we can manage our stormwater, the parking, and traffic issues. So just to reiterate, that we appreciate that the staff has recommended approval of this downzoning, but we also recommend that we don't have the exemptions, mainly because opting out of the corner lots, like I said, seven of the nine corner lots, folks have asked not to be, they're asked to be part of the downzoning, and not to be exempted. And we feel it's unfair to the neighbors who live adjacent to those corner lots, they should not be singled out to suffer the loss of, you know, viewscape and have to deal with other stormwater issues. Like I mentioned, there's a lot of adjacent higher-density housing, we have condos near, near Boost Fitness Club, we also have a lot of apartments and things up the hill on Percy Warner Boulevard. So, and there's, and finally, there's not any existing two-family lots in the area to be zoned. So this is in alignment with what's existing on the ground, so it's, it's consistent with neighborhood maintenance. Thank you for your consideration.
Let me ask the people in line, is there anyone that has something that they could add that he didn't for the sake of, really, because we are gonna lose a quorum, and is there anyone that would like to speak that has other, other issues besides what he said? Come on the phone.
Okay, my name's Nancy Tisdale, I live at 1028 Edwin Warner, I've lived there since 1993. I'm in a unique position, I've been a realtor in Nashville for 22 years, a registered nurse for 30, go figure, I do both. RS15, our neighborhood is the definition of RS15. We have not a single house that does not reflect RS15. Thank you.
Go ahead, anything you can add that doesn't repeat what the previous people have said?
Yes, sir. So my name is Cynthia Pascal, I live at 6312 Percy Drive, and so I will try to keep it really brief here. So about 30% of the lots in here are in the floodway or 100-year floodplain, but way more of our lots are affected by stormwater runoff, and I want to tell you a little bit about that. First of all, what wasn't pointed out is that the upstream of the creek is Boost Fitness Club with 1.7 acres under roof, and a very large parking lot that spans the creek. This is upstream from all of us who live downstream. We don't have storm sewers, what we have is a series of open channels and streams, and there's an intermittent stream that runs behind my house, like, and like those of the, in the rest of the neighborhood, it's been silting up for years. However, a few years ago, when Metro tried to address some of our stormwater problems, they found that environmental regulations would prohibit dredging out this stream to recover capacity. We, we don't have capacity for anything more in terms of runoff. The regulated residential infill requirements, you know, that's wonderful, the contextual overlay bill, that's wonderful, you know, they have great wise provisions, but unfortunately, they won't help us, because it's quite possible to build two homes under the current zoning on our lots, and increase the corresponding hardscape by a total of 66%. So, and that affects not just the homes, again, in the floodway, but those of us who live, I'm out of the flood zone, but I definitely have problems with stormwater, excuse me, running down from the uphill sides, and I live downhill from a whole lot of those blue lots, okay? I don't, I can't have that. So I'm favored with the downzoning, as we all are, without exceptions, because we don't have capacity for more stormwater.
Hello, thank you. My name is Vicki Dooley, I live at 6319 Percy Drive, have been at that home for 22 years. I would like to talk to you about the process that our Neighborhood Association has followed to get to this point. In 2004, we started the association, each year we have a picnic and a meeting, and the topic of downzoning has been discussed since 2009. The board meets regularly throughout the year, and more if there's a need, we have website, Facebook page, and email list. So we inform of our picnics and all of these things with flyers, with signs, put at every major intersection. Most years, the volunteers distribute flyers to individual homes, and the topic of downzoning has been consistently on the agenda. In December, the neighborhood was papered with flyers to announce the meeting to specifically address the downzoning. It was also posted on the Facebook page and sent out by email. Again, signs were put up at major intersections, and we have those signs that we can show you. The Boost Fitness Club led us use their facility to hold the meeting, and Councilwoman Evans and the association president led the meeting and filled with questions. There were approximately 70 to 80 people that attended, and many others dropped by, notes saying they were in support of the downzoning but could not stay. At the meeting, we had a show of hands to determine if the neighborhood should proceed, and at that time, there was only one person that expressed that they were against the change. With overwhelming support, the neighborhood decided to move forward. On April 12th, we held a meeting at the JCC. We advertised in the usual way with signs and Facebook page...
Thank you.
200 petitions plus.
Next.
And, sir, those were given to the planning commission, I think you should have a copy of those 200 petitions. My name is Alan Dooley, I live at 6319 Percy Drive in the area. I'm an architect with 25 years' experience designing dwellings and representing clients on stormwater appeals. Recently, metro ordinances, recently passed metro ordinances will do little to protect our neighborhood, as they are tailored more for smaller lots. The first is the metro ordinance pertaining to two-family dwellings. The height restriction ratio of one horizontal to one and a half vertical may work for a narrow lot, however, for our lot width of 100 feet and 10-foot setbacks, a two-family dwelling will be 40 feet wide, and the height of unit can be as high as 60 feet or three stories. 40 feet, if it's wood, but still, that's a lot higher than our highest residents in the neighborhood, which is around 26 feet high typically. Number two, the Nashville Stormwater Manual. Recently, there's been legislation passed to deal with the problem that two-family infills having on stressing our stormwater infrastructure, infrastructure or lack thereof. This legislation will do little to protect our neighborhood if infill were to occur. With duplex construction, we will have a stormwater disaster in the making. New construction done in our neighborhood would exceed the 30% of impervious surface to require stormwater capture. On a lot of a size of 15,000 square feet, the impervious surface would be greater than 4,500, yeah, 4,500 square feet for any retention to be required. A typical home roof now in the neighborhood with driveway and patio is about 2,700 square feet, so this whopping additional 1,800 square feet would increase our stormwater impervious surface 66%, with no stormwater retention required. Three, the contextual overlay district ordinance. The recent contextual overlay ordinance, which would be a zoning change, is not appropriate to consider instead of our proposed downzoning. The maximum height control is regulating height or too restrictive. Also, the driveways don't apply. Please vote for a downzoning.
Hi, I know we are about to lose a quorum, so I'm wondering if you would just let me speak for a couple of minutes, and for the rest of you, I will cover all the topics, and you will have another opportunity at the council. Is that okay? Is that acceptable?
That's great, thank you.
So, the last time I was here for a downzone, I told you that I had about three neighborhoods in my district that are, they were built without stormwater drainage, and, literally and truly, and I live in one of those neighborhoods. And one of the challenges for stormwater has been, there's no place to put this retrofit. There's, houses are built out to their full envelopes, they've got HVAC systems down the side, lot yard, there's nowhere to put stuff. And so, one of the things that concerns me about this neighborhood, which really, really did get severely damaged during the flood of 2010, both in volume and in velocity of Richland Creek, is that we really need to get to that place with stormwater where the retrofit work is funded. They have told me that, promised me that they would at least get to design before the end of the term. In the meantime, we really want to kind of control how things are built out over there, and that really calls for keeping the building envelope similar to what they are today, and that is, single-family homes. So, I'd like to ask for your approval. I did see the nine lots, I would like your indulgence while I meet and talk to those individual property owners about opting them out, I don't know how they feel about it, I need to talk to them, and any other people that would like to be not included. Usually, my system has been to take care of those right before third reading, so we do it all at once, so I'd appreciate your approval, and, and then I'll take care of the other stuff later, okay?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Did you indicate there at the end that any other residents besides these nine that would like to opt out, that you would entertain that before the third reading?
Before the third reading, I'd like to consider it all at once, if that's okay with you guys.
Okay, thank you. No others wanting to speak in support or against, anyone wishing to speak on the opposing side, please come to the microphone.
We want opponents, opponents.
Speaking in opposition to it?
I'm in support of downsizing.
No, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this, to this measure.
Thank you, council members, for sticking with us. My name is Andy Newman, I live at 43 Vons Gap Road. I'm here to ask the planning commission to not defeat, but to defer this matter until more community discussion can occur for all the homeowners and ability, or at least, as we talked about, the ability to opt out, which I'm really not sure if there's a guarantee to opt out, or is that just a, I'll listen to it, but I can make the final decision later. So the reasons for my deferral are several. One, the only real community meeting happened on April 12th, 11 days ago. Many of us showed up at that meeting, were unaware that this was introduced into Metro Council, so we were caught way off guard that this issue is occurring. That was the first time many people have learned of that issue. Council Evans even said at that meeting, this process could take as long as it takes, as long as everyone is happy or satisfied what's going on. I don't see any apparent sense of urgency at this point. Staff has pointed out, there's 300 homes, not one home has two lots on it, so why can't this be debated, the merits of what's going on, before we rush into something, because there's no need to that. We haven't even heard from Nashville Next, what they have to say about this particular neighborhood, I think their input would be important, again, because there is no sense of urgency for this to happen. This association does not represent the neighborhood, it's a private association with our own personal agenda. We have not had any input...
Go ahead.
We have not had any input from Metro stormwater or traffic as to effect of this thing. The change, and this change will have long-term consequences in our neighborhood, the merits need to be debated before that, so I'm asking that you defer this item until more input from the community can be heard.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is, my name is Joe Kane, I live at 949 Percy Warner Boulevard. Thank you, Chairman McLean, I appreciate the time, I'll try and be brief. You received a letter from me, I was, I have not, was not able to get in communication with, with Council Lady Evans until, until this meeting today. She has agreed to have additional meetings, she had asked that, that I would be the one to set those meetings up with that. I think this has taken a lot of the neighborhood a little bit by surprise. The meeting on, on April 12th, after we had gotten the notice of the zone change, your signs had gotten posted out into the neighborhood and everything like that, I think was the first for many people to understand that it had actually progressed as far as it had progressed. Ms. Evans had passed that on first reading already, without any handed-out notices as to how far the, this process was progressing, but she has agreed to have some more meetings, and so I think I checked a little box of saying that I'm opposed to this. I think what I, I would like to change her opinion and say I would request a deferral on that until we can get some more input on that, and some more neighborhood input on that, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas Rucker, I live at 1027 Percy Warner Boulevard, I've been a resident of Warner Park Valley, almost 38 years. Of all the time I've been there, this is the first time I heard of Neighborhood Association. Never have we had any complaints, any issues, neighbor helping neighbor. I concur with the last two speakers. We need to slow down, defer, we need a time to study what's going on. See what, if the zoning is changed, what impact it will be to the property owners. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the applicant be allowed two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like.
I'm not rebutting, I'm just asking for your approval tonight, and I will take care of...
of the opt-out situation before third reading, and we will have as many meetings as people want. I love meetings, I'll go to all the meetings that I'm invited to. And that's all I have.
Clear the public hearing closed, Jessica.
So, I respect the councilwoman's request, although I feel that I would be more comfortable if we went ahead and deferred this until some of those meetings had been held and we had more opportunity for neighborhood input. I think there's enough people that have expressed some question, and this is a pretty big, significant change, so I would be in favor of deferral.
Just for the commission's understanding, there has been a bill filed, and absent the council lady agreeing to defer that, it would be taken as an approval when it gets to the council.
Deferral would be taken as an approval?
Right, yes, under the council rules, yeah.
Well, then I'm going to listen for a moment and see where we end up.
Stuart.
I agree. I think some compelling, you know, I don't like mass downzonings, but a very compelling case has been made here about the particular area we're talking about. And in seven and a half years of this last council, I have not seen any council member with more of an understanding of her district and a better track record of actually passing everything she sets out to pass. So, I think this will work out, but as a matter of just general process, this kind of an issue, this many lots, this level of intense feeling, it deserves a little more attention from this body, and if that means it gets the council lady's seats to move under the rules to approve it anyway, I guess that's her prerogative, but as a commissioner, I think we should take another look at this.
Yes.
The staff recommendation is disapproval without the amendment that we add back in those nine lots, is that correct?
That you take those nine lots out.
We take those nine lots out, but based on...
Obviously, the staff approval is based on the general position we've taken on all of these, that there should be some minimal degree of housing choice in neighborhoods over a long period of time, and the fact that, just to be honest, unless none of the houses are ever going to be added on to, and all of them are built out completely, then, I mean, the stormwater issues are real, but we don't necessarily think that providing a little housing choice is inappropriate.
Well, so my question is, if there, if it's known that some of these neighbors that are considered in our amendment to opt out, don't want to be included in the opt-out, I mean, I think that the deferral gives time to both sides, because even if I were to vote to go forward with staff recommendation, we're placing nine units, or nine homeowners, into that amendment that may or may not want to be there. So, I just don't think it's in anyone's interest to push that forward until there's consensus on that.
And I did want to add, too, that the recommendation, we have pointed out these nine specific lots, but it doesn't have to be these lots. Our recommendation is to remove certain lots at key intersections. The lots can change, as pointed out in the staff report, it doesn't have to be these lots. These are the ones that we have initially submitted for your consideration, but it could certainly be different lots.
Let me just clarify, the lots are going to be identified before the third reading, so.
Absolutely.
And that can be, I guess, these people that were here in opposition to it tonight, if they wanted to opt their property out, they could be part of that.
Yeah, and may I add something about the housing stock question? We excluded before, before we did this down, we've applied for this downzone, we excluded a chunk of the neighborhood that fronts on I-70, and we did that specifically with the idea that that is ideal for intense, more intense development, even more intense than a duplex, a duplex, because it's right there on the corridor. So, that, that's one of the concessions, major concessions, actually, to housing stock questions.
Stuart, do you have other comments?
No, I just...
Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On downzonings, I appreciate the council lady bringing it in the form of doing the opt-out provisions. I think that the opt-out provisions provide the multifamily stock for the neighborhood, and so I'm going to support this.
Eric.
In light of some of the challenges that individuals living in this neighborhood face with respect to stormwater, I think they need immediate, to the extent of our abilities, immediate relief from the challenges associated with stormwater. And this may not be a panacea, but it could potentially be a step in the right direction. Therefore, I am in favor of it.
Andre.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think it's a step, because people could tear down existing houses and build bigger houses and pave more of the yard and still have a zoning issue, whether it's single-family or duplex. So, I think that's the two, there's a combination of issues that need to be sorted apart a little bit so that people understand. So, maybe ultimately, they need a design overlay. If they don't want bigger houses, or I'm not sure quite what the goal is, so that ultimately, that needs to be clear to everybody, what is really at the root of what they want. So, that may take some time to figure out. I'm interested to hear a motion to see which way we go, but...
Jessica, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I'll move to approve.
With these...
No, we, I'll make a motion to approve as long as there, is a timeframe for an opt-out, for opt-out provisions.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Say that again.
So, I'll move to approve as long as the councilwoman, you know, you provide for the folks that want to opt out to opt out, that provides the multifamily housing options. Are you in support of these, the amendment, the way the staff is?
I really want to look at it a little more closely and talk to some of the property owners, because honestly, I've heard from a few of them that are in favor of being downzoned, so I just need a little bit of, I plan on sorting that out before third reading, and then in addition, you know, there's those people that always, you know, want to opt out.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll tell you what I've told you every single other time I've been here, which is before third reading, we will, we will look at all that, and then we will, and I'll contact staff if we need to talk about the housing stock variability issue.
Okay.
But you have that promise, we'll look at that before third reading.
All right. Well, before I make a motion, the reality is, is that the council lady, if we approve staff recommendation, the council lady can, cannot put these particular lots in, are, it'd be disapproved at that point.
No, it provides a variety, provides the option to move them around, as was said, yeah.
So, it doesn't have to be these particular lots?
Right, right.
The planning, our planning goals are to continue to have some, some housing variety, and so our staff has recommended nine potential sites. It could be nine sites that are different from these, it could be a combination of these and some others, but it's a, our policy lately has been, if we were going to entertain downzoning, that we would at least create a few pockets of opportunity for...
Well, I agree with that statement, but there are some on the commission, including myself, that on downzoning of RS, I have always had the theory, it is a little bit different than the planning commission, and that the opt-out provisions provide the stock. Now, if you can move those around and you get to nine, then that makes sense to me. So...
That's what the staff recommended.
But I, I feel like we should have some stay in that, because what if all nine of these identified owners don't want to opt out, and we don't have any that want to opt out? We've lost all control over maintaining some diversity in housing stock in that area. So, I feel like we need to support, we need something in there that would say that there's an amendment to require some, you know, removal of some number or percentage of lots, or something that would be held out, whether it's these nine or another nine anywhere, but something that mandates that there's...
We've got nine here that the staff has designated.
But we've already said that those are, could be moved around.
Let's say that they're going to say, I'm going to opt out, you've agreed to the limit to do that. There's been three others here that spoke tonight that didn't want to, so maybe that number nine would be twelve, that we approve it, but would at least twelve of the lots be, be remained, R-15.
And I, I mean, I don't know if that's, makes, if that makes, I mean, it feels very arbitrary to say it just has to be nine lots. I feel like we need to have some rationale for, you know, where we think they need to go and how many, because I agree, and I think I could support it if we had something in there that said that it wasn't, you know, that we were coming up with an amendment to remove certain lots, and it would be X percent of...
Well, staff developed this based on, we felt like that, when you analyzed this development, that there were at least nine prime locations that would be appropriate for leaving as our zoning. And so, if, if, these would be the ones that would be most obvious, the corner locations, they're, they're locations that would be appropriate for a two-family dwelling. If the, if the, I mean, we couldn't find more than nine, so, you know, if, you know, if you wanted to go with a minimum of nine, or something like that, I don't know that we would, I mean, you could do a percentage, that would be probably as arbitrary as anything. We felt like we analyzed the site and came up with nine sites.
And I wanted to point out, too, that the staff report gives, does give the flexibility to move those sites around, and just says that lots that are to remain should be located in strategic locations. We don't want them all grouped into one particular area, that they need to meet the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance for construction of a two-family unit, and they not be located in the flood zone. So, the staff report did give some guidance in regards to the location of the sites.
Well, with that said, I mean, I understand where, I mean, different, reasonable minds can reasonably differ, and, you know, I, part of planning is having the community discussion and the community involvement. You know, I feel a little more comfortable personally with the staff recommendation, if the sites can be, you know, moved around, and I think that the community and the council lady are the best people to decide that, quite frankly. And so, these are recommendations from the staff, these particular lots, we recommend, but that at the end of the day, that it's up to the community and the council lady to make that decision, so as long as those lots can be moved around, and that's in the record from the planning commission, I will move the staff recommendation. That's my motion.
Second, Jessica. Okay, we've got a motion, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Four to two? Was that four to two?
We need clear designation from the commissioners, please.
Well...
I had, let me, let me, I had for the record, these are fours and twos. Is that wrong?
Show hands, all in favors, all in favor.
I will vote in favor because the deferral, I think the deferral is answered, because you're telling us an implicit approval, so.
Let me see a show hands, all in favor.
I'll say.
Okay, so five to one.
I do too, but if not, if it's a...
We're now ready for item number nineteen.
Okay, item nineteen is a request, are we ready? I'm sorry, okay. This is a request to rezone from RS-15 and IR to IWD. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The property is located at the corner of Ashland City Highway and Cato Road. The property to the front here is currently zoned IR, and the back property is zoned RS-15. The policy currently is district industrial for the front and T2 rural neighborhood maintenance for the back. There's also conservation policy throughout. The growth and preservation concept map shows no changes proposed. Staff is recommending disapproval. Staff is recommending disapproval because this is inconsistent with the T2 rural neighborhood maintenance policy. There's a lack of utilities to serve any new development in the area, and staff does not recommend extension of utilities into rural areas, which would promote a higher intensity of development area where it's not appropriate. So, again, this, this is showing the existing conditions, and staff is recommending disapproval.
Items open to public hearing, the applicant has ten minutes, keep two back for rebuttal if he would like.
Thank you, remaining commissioners. I'm Roy Dale with Dale &amp; Associates, five sixteen Heather Place, and I'm representing the applicant on this proposal. When the council member spoke, I think it was very confusing. He had to leave, but I did talk to him, and what he was trying to express to the commission was, would you like to live around an industrial piece of property? And more or less, what he's trying to say is, there's a piece of property on the front right now that's zoned IR. And what Lionel was trying to say is, it's not likely that people would want to live behind that existing IR, and it made sense to him to expand the IR along Bradley Parkway, to make it more linear, and then to provide some type of transition from a linear use, which would be industrial, to some other future use, which might be residential, it could be anything, quite honestly. You know, this property is mostly, to the west of this is AR2A, which could allow a lot of things by special exception. So, what the council member was trying to clearly say is that he supports the idea of taking the IR in front and reducing it to an IWD, and then extending the IWD back. I've had some calls about this, there have been three meetings within the community, there's been a, there have been, there have been, there have been three meetings within the community, I know there'll be more. But everyone that I've talked to, there's a lot of confusion about this. A lot of people didn't even understand what side of Bradley Parkway this is on. A lot of people felt like that maybe there would be future connections to Cato Road, and there will not be. There's seven hundred feet of property between this side and Cato Road, so they will not extend to Cato. This is complicated, obviously. I think the council member, I think he clearly wants to do this, he expressed to the commission that regardless of what action you take, if it goes to council, he'll probably amend this, he probably will do this as an SP, and maybe it should have been presented as an SP in the beginning, but that's not the way it's proceeded. In the meetings that we have had with the community members that were present, there's been discussion about providing an extensive buffer along the west-hand side, and I'm sure the council member will do that when it gets to council through either restrictive covenant, which I think he mentioned, or through an SP process. But from our perspective, I think it does make sense that the existing industrial policy be expanded to the north. I don't think it's likely that anyone's going to develop residential property behind that existing industrial IR zoning. The properties to the west, the planning commission has mentioned this in their staff report, that there's a lack of utilities in the area. I think that a lot of these industrial uses don't really demand a lot of access to utilities, and as a matter of fact, some of them, probably the large intense use to the south, which is an industrial, probably has little to any utility access at all. Traffic from an industrial use can be less than traffic from a residential use, so I think there's some merit here to consider this, and I think the council member will continue to have meetings within the community. I know he will, he's committed to do that. So, I simply ask you to consider the alternatives here, to consider what I've said and what the council member sees in the future of his district. I don't think he sees this as a residential growth area, quite honestly. So, I think the attorney wants to speak, and he'll probably reserve a couple of minutes for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Hello, commission, thank you for being here so late in the evening. I am the attorney for the applicant, and just to clarify, or add on as well.
Please take your name and address.
I'm sorry?
Please take your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Adam Dred, and seventeen oh nine Nineteenth Avenue South. The plan is to make this whole thing IWD, there would only be one entrance, and that entrance would be on Ashland City Highway. There would be no exit onto Cato Lane, and there would be at least seven hundred feet away from the subdivision. The plan is also to keep trees all around it and keep it out of the sightline of any neighbors. We have had, we've had two meetings at the Bordeaux Library with neighbors, and then there was a separate meeting with a group of neighbors who called us and wanted to meet and discuss it as well. So, there have been three meetings on this issue. Nothing was filed, or nothing was, plans, nothing was planned for a zone change until after we had those meetings. That's always been the plan. We've been in touch with Councilman Matthews throughout the process, who has been very helpful. Recently, a candidate running for his seat sent out a letter telling people we have to stop industrial in our neighborhood, and this will reduce our property values, and that's, that's what he's been touting, and that's why people are here to speak against it. At all our meetings we had, we wanted to hear from people, to hear what they would like, what they wouldn't like, and we've agreed to specific covenants to put on, on the property to contain it and to, to keep it as a benefit for the neighborhood. There will be jobs there, we don't know how many, but there will be, there will be work there that the other businesses in the area should benefit from as well. So, we would like you to please approve this, and again, like to reiterate, but it already is IR, and we would rather not go that route. We'd rather... We'd rather go with the down zone and a slight up zone on the, on backside. Thank you.
We'll be allowed two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please line up behind each other at the microphone.
Hi, my name is Betty Wallace. I've been a resident on Ashland City Highway since 1990. It takes me 10 minutes to get out of my driveway to get, in order to go to work, and I would like to say another thing. I went to a meeting last year in reference to this problem. It was at the YMCA. We opposed it. We came here and opposed it. Have never heard anything about it. It was by accident that I heard about this meeting. I have not received any correspondence or anything. Last year, only five residents in front of the property received notices. And Mr. Lionel was very upset because someone made copies and passed it within the neighborhood, and there was a lot of people that showed up here for opposition, that did not approve of the units or for the change. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commission members. My name is Lionel Green. I am a candidate for Metro Council District One, and I just want to rise in dispute with Attorney Adam Dred has stated. The purpose of my letter was not to approve or advocate disapproval for this project. The, the purpose of my letter that I sent to my neighbors was because my neighbors were not informed. The meeting that the gentleman alluded to, that they came to, was a Northwest Civic Association meeting. The problem is only five people were at that meeting and the people who attend that meeting live nowhere near where this proposed development is going to be. So my campaign is big on transparency. My letter was not designed to approve or disapprove, but simply to allow my neighbors the opportunity, allow their voices to be heard because the council, Mr. Matthews or the powers that be had not communicated to the neighbors. So I took it upon myself to make sure they're informed. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Nicole Northern. I live at 416 Spickert, right on the other side of that bunch of trees right up there. I would like for you to know that we knew nothing about this. My neighborhood that is directly affected by this, that Councilman, Councilman Matthews currently lives in, but will no longer live in once this is developed. So I want you all to know that we don't have a problem with industrial. We live across Ashland City Highway peacefully with Horizon, with Hunt Brothers over there. They're fine. But we do not want this development right in our backyard, as he said, even though he was trying to allude to this part, it's still in our backyards. And we don't want it there. If they can do what they need to do on IR in this first part, why give them more? They don't need it. They just want to develop it for more stuff that'll affect us. So, and honestly, coming off of Bradley Parkway and on the Ashland City Highway, it's already tons of traffic. And honestly, it smells a little bit over by those warehouses over there. So just imagine 48.4 more acres of that in your yard. Would you want that? You wouldn't. You already said that you wouldn't. So don't, don't only think about the S, the single-family lot right there, think about all of the single-family lots that are already there. There's over 200 houses, over 140 in Jordan Ridge and 130 in Edens Creek Park, not even counting the houses that are on Cato that back directly to this. So please keep us in mind with this. We don't want it. And I hope that you've received all the emails from the people who could not make it today and you hear my neighbors who do not want this here. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Smith Curry. I live at 4517 Cato Road with my wife and my infant son. Been there for over a decade. Yeah, I mean, the argument that the Councilman Matthews proposed, that just because parcel one is IR, that we should go ahead and reduce parcel 200, the northernmost one, and have a massive industrial warehouse there is just ludicrous. If you look, the people who live in parcel 72, 71, 73, it'd be right on their front lawn, this massive thing. And now with the new developments, housing development that she was talking to about Jordan Ridge and stuff on the other side of Cato, that's actually up on a hill where they'd be able to overlook the nice massive warehouse and hear the big trucks beeping as they back up and all that stuff. So really just kind of adding to what she said, it just doesn't make sense just because parcel one is zoned industrial, we should go ahead and throw out the baby with the bathwater, so to speak. Just, I don't see any reason to put anything like this in the area. It's just developers trying to make a quick bucket at the expense of people that are less privileged than a lot of the 12 South and Belmeade people you heard the cases of earlier today. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Olga Vikes and I'm a neighbor of Mr. Matthew. He never informed me about this situation. I'm having lived in there for two years and against this because the value of the property is coming down. I don't know in the future how this is going to be the interest to this particular industrial area. I don't want the value of my property come down as well on my neighborhood. And I think also in the future, the guy, they try to change this, have two more properties that goes toward Cato Road. So in the future, thinking this entrance is going to be toward Cato Road, so there is a school there, I'm concerned about the traffic. And so, and it's just two ways road. And also, I'm from Costa Rica. This area is beautiful and I don't want to destroy, try to conserve mainly like the way they is. Thank you so much.
My name is Troy Williams. I'm an architect with Barge Cothlin &amp; Associates. I've lived at 4479 Cato Road for 23 years. Brief history of this, the parcel that's currently zoned IR was purchased by two brothers in March of 1996, and they convinced council, former council lady Loretta McLaughlin to convert, to the, to rezone that property to IR so they could build a cabinet manufacturing plant. They discovered because of there's a raised concrete island separating the east and westbound traffic lanes at Ashland City Highway, that they had limited access to that property. So they eventually sold that property at auction, and that's when the current owner bought it in June of 2003. They also purchased the property that is currently zoned RS-15 in June of 2003. I'm sorry, yeah, June of 2003. And previously requested from Council Lady Brenda Gilmore that that property be rezoned. She disapproved of that. I appreciate staff disapproving this current zoning request and hope that the, the whole council will also disapprove of this request. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Anatola Gornz and I've been here before at this time, before. I'm at 4365 Cato Road. I'd like to thank y'all for staying because I've been here before when y'all had to, at the council and I had to come back again. I'm one of the few people that did get a notice, a little card that I didn't understand, and I drove around the neighborhood to figure out what. And then I called Dale &amp; Associates, whatever, and asked them questions and they couldn't answer my questions. They couldn't tell me exactly where it was. And they did not meet with me. I went to the neighbors, walked through and asked neighbors, did you get a card? Did you get? No, they did not receive them. I'm one of the few that did. And so it took me until actually Friday where I figured out where the property was and what was going on. And I do disapprove of this because it is going to create, we have one way in and one way out on Cato Road. One way in and one way out. We have subdivisions and the traffic, the noise is horrible already on Bradley Parkway. Why would we add to our discomfort? It doesn't make sense. I pay my taxes, I pay them on time. I think I, we all deserve to have a decent place to live. And I ask you to disapprove this.
Thank you all. My name is Sylvester Armour. I'm a real estate broker in Nashville, a resident at 104 Queens Lane. I'm also a candidate for District One as well. About my, while canvassing the area, Jordan Ridge and Edens Creek subdivisions, I've been asking different neighbors, the growth is coming to this community. You know, you have to expect it. And for the most part, everyone's against any growth on Ashland City Highway. Somewhat on Ashland, on Clark Street Highway, but any type of growth on Ashland City Highway, the residents of those two main subdivisions are totally against it. Also, the elder, well, the senior residents in that subdivision as well, also against basically the development of anything on Ashland City Highway. I do support them and I hope you do disapprove this motion. Thank you.
My name is Joe Gillam. I live at 4447 Cato Road. Been there about nine years. It's about, probably about seven acres to the west of that parcel 200 he's trying to turn into a warehouse. I'm totally against it. I noticed they got the big buffer zone between 200 and that Cato Road, but there's no kind of buffer zones for the land to the west, which is actually very prime land. There's almost no land left and there's plenty of opportunity for people to build beautiful homes on those lands, even though it's just some of them are old farmhouses. And I've just visited one of the neighbors that lived at 072, which is adjacent to it, and I sat there and looked right at it. And you can see the cars on Bradley. And I don't care what kind of buffer zone you put in there, he is going to hear those trucks constantly. Every truck is loud when it's in first gear. There's always backup beepers. There's always those air brakes they release. You're going to hear it everywhere. As far as trying to use the argument that because the front is IR, that they should just now turn this into something else. Well, my suggestion is, is if you're going to do anything, then maybe you should get rid of the IR and just make it all housing. There's really no sense to have any kind of... It's just, it's like, you can just look into this picture, it's like sticking in a warehouse for one particular person to make some money on while the rest of these people with, you know, four, five, six acres, even though it's a buffer zone, it's not going to be any kind of buffer zone. And when you go there and you look at that property, it's all up on a hill. I can practically, will probably, the sound will probably, you know, carry for 20 acres because right now they're building across on Cato Road and I hear those backup beepers all the time. And I'm more than, you know, 20 acres away. So nothing's going to really make a difference except putting houses there. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Eric Casey. I live at 1059 Rambling Brook Road, and I've been in the subdivision ever since it was built 2004 or '05. And I just wanted to say that Northwest Nashville's always been a dumping ground for what nobody else wants. We've put up with the landfill, all other type of industrial, and it could be environmental problems. Who knows what, you know, someone wants to develop. So I hope you disapprove this and that's basically all I have to say.
Good evening, council. My name is Donna Jones and I'm here on behalf of Ruben Dockery, who is at 2352 Hockett Drive. And I am also near the neighborhood, the neighborhood, I'm at 2925 Nocturne Forest Drive. I just want you to remember the days when you worked hard for the homes that you live in. Well, the people that you just saw that spoke worked equally as hard to live in wonderful homes. That subdivision has grown expeditiously. It has homes that range anywhere from maybe 100 to 65,000 to maybe $350,000. Nobody wants that or deserves that type of industrial parkway in their backyard. And so we, we are here as a group collectively to ask you, please disapprove of this tonight. Thank you.
My name is Vincent Bridgford. I stay at 305 Gwendolyn Court. In any endeavor that people look at, we have to look at who benefits from this. Does this benefit the community of people there? Does it benefit the children? Does it benefit the housing? There's a school not far from there. And we talk about industry, we're talking about oil, irons and things that will be burned into the community. We're trying, America's trying to come closer to green living. Now, when you deal with industrial powers of this nature, we're going to have so many different things and, you know, cancers and all these things may cause problems in this area. And so if you live here, most of these gentlemen, if you ask them, the lawyers and all these guys, they're not going to stay there. Soon as industry strikes up, I bet you they're not going to buy a home there. There are nice homes there. Why won't they live there? But then again, it's no benefit of gaining money if they stay there. They gain contracts. You know, they don't gain the benefit of living in that area where it's quiet. You're going to have noise pollution now. We're not just talking about smog and things of this nature, it's going to be noise pollution, constant up and down. So when you review this, look at who benefits from it. And does it help the people in the community or does it hurt the people in the community? And who benefits? So I beg you, and we ask you, disapprove of this. Thank you.
My name is Bill Williams. I live at 108 Queens Lane. Mr. McLean should know me by now. Then by 40 years or 42 years, you built my house. So you know I'm going to...
Is it still lovable?
Well, you know what? We try to take care of it. We try to take care of it, but it's been many years. I'm asking that you disapprove the total package. This is a good community. I've been here before, not here. We have asked for a traffic light at Eden Creek Road and Ashland City Highway. Well, they moved it on out a little fuck that Bradley Parkway. I hope you don't disappoint me at this time. Thank you.
Well, you exposed my age, so I don't know that I can support you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You aged very nicely. I appreciate you staying. I'll just answer some of the questions that came up. We did mail out the public, you know, required notices, the postcards and the letters. We mailed them out. There are only 14 acres being added to the existing industrial, not 43. At the end of the day, it'll go from 14 to 28. We're unaware of any prior zone change on this property. There are no warehouses currently proposed. We know that the council member will have community meetings. I know that. And he'll, I'm sure, based upon what's probably occurred, I'm sure there's plenty of sentences. There are two isolated large parcels. I'm sure that the notifications only went a certain distance and we'll make sure they go out much, much further. There will be no access to Cato Road. There are needs in Davidson County for industrial properties, for jobs, for growth. This is an area where we feel like there's an existing industrial. It probably makes sense to expand that industrial and expand it along Bradley Parkway and have a linear transition to future development. I don't think this property is likely, the properties to the west are likely to develop at any residential densities in the future. I think they'll be large. As a matter of fact, I think the policy there calls for large acreage tracts, two acres, 80,000 square feet. So large parcels in themselves will not be as affected by adjacent industrial zoning. There's not going to be. I would venture to say if I had a 300-litre subdivision before you today on the properties to the west, there'd be all kinds of people here in opposition to that based upon traffic. So we feel like that the expansion of the zoning makes sense. And do your thing. I appreciate it.
Clear the public hearing closed. And Andre?
I feel like that we do have a need for industrial property in Davidson County. We've got to be really careful not to lose it. And we, we have to be able to supply our buildings and things that we're changing in the city and do it at a local level and be close to town, accessible. And that IR property does that already. That being said, I feel like that this analysis by the staff is very cogent. The public sewer isn't there, extending it in. I understand that industrial doesn't always use heavy infrastructure. It depends. We haven't even, I have no idea what is being proposed. So I don't even, I can't really address that. I can't say, oh, well, there won't be much infrastructure needed. There might be a lot. I mean, it might need a ton of power. It might need a ton of water. If it could be a Coca-Cola bottling plant, I don't know what we're talking about. So I would, I would tend toward favoring the staff recommendation.
Derek?
Having grown up not far from this area, I understand some of the concerns broached by the neighbors. That notwithstanding, there has been no overarching reason presented tonight to make a... That notwithstanding, there has been no overarching reason presented tonight to make a change to the zoning in this area, and I do support staff recommendations.
Greg?
This is one of those where it really does come down to planning policy. It is true that it's a big county and that there are lots of needs for industrial policy in the county. I think it needs to be expanded in the county, but the staff is exactly right on this one. Just to read what was explained already, "Staff does not support the rezoning of rural property that is not served by adequate infrastructure and does not support the extension of utilities into this rural area." And it goes on, and really, that's the whole thing. From a planning point of view, this, not only is this, I mean, this is contrary to policy and good planning at this point, so I would be opposed to it.
Jessica?
I ditto what Stuart just said, and I will make a motion that we approve staff recommendation.
Motion second to approve staff recommendation, which is to disapprove the expansion. All in favor, aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Anything from Parks?
Anything from Parks?
No, that's a revised one from...
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I gave you.
Okay. Nothing from Parks.
You have a thing from Parks? Director's report, or you want to...
Yeah, let me just quickly highlight the executive committee report. This is the executive committee report, and you'll be presenting this at your next meeting, but it is basically going over the public hearing process for the consideration of Nashville Next. The process is proposed to be a two-phase process. On the 10th, that would include the public hearing, opening the public hearing, all comments being two minutes. Each request for an amendment would be noted. The commission would close the public hearing and then make a motion in second to approve Nashville Next at that point in time. Staff would then present a list of all the requested amendments to the commission on the 10th. You would identify which of any of those, this is not a vote, just identify any of those you'd like to consider, and then you would adjourn to the June 15th meeting. At the June 15th meeting, then it would be for the Planning Commission consideration. If there are any amendments that staff concurs in automatically, there's no opposition, we would probably prepare a consent agenda for you for that, and then you would go through on each individual amendment. We would go through the order that they're presented in. The commission would either, would make a motion, if you don't make a motion, you'd go to the next item. If you make a motion, then you would debate that amendment and make determination one way or the other. After all the amendments have been considered by the commission, then you would have before you the motion to approve the plan as amended incorporating those amendments, and you would take action. So that's kind of the way, and then you celebrate and implement.
So Rick, there'd be a full public hearing...
The full public hearing is on the 10th.
With the request, which we hope people speak in terms of ways that they would like to see amended, not just general issues.
Right. What we anticipate is, actually, as people come forward to speak or afterwards, is to get a title of what they're requesting and the details, and part of the purpose is, between the 10th and the 15th, is to get it in the right wording, that you would have the right wording.
So there'd be a public hearing, then it would be closed, and then we would, five days later, go through a list.
Debate it on the 15th.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and what I appreciate is, Rick had said, we're in the executive committee meeting, that we want to encourage the public to be clear in what it is they're really trying to say, because the staff wants to be true to what they're saying and bring it to us in their, as much as, you know, in their language, so that it's not biased in any way. And so we want to tell the public, you know, be very brief but clear, so that we can understand what the amendment request would be, so we have something to vote on from what they're asking for.
And one other thing we would include, we will be, once we post the static draft on May 11th, we'll be getting comments, and some of those amendments may come to you in terms of the initial staff report. At the end of, before you close the public hearing and after all of the comments have been received, if there are requests that weren't made in public, we will enter those into the record for the commission to consider, so that you'll have all the comments, all the requests for amendments that we have received since the static draft was posted.
And that will be a special meeting and will require a quorum and...
Yes, we would strongly encourage, we're going to circulate again, start this, that all members attend both meetings. There is the potential, if something happened and you couldn't attend the 10th, to watch all 30 minutes to 12 hours of whatever that hearing is going to be on the 10th.
12 hours.
We never know how long it's going to be, but it would be better.
He talks a lot. Be better to attend, of course.
He talks a lot. I don't know what they're talking about.
You said this at the beginning, but one more time for the public, that the 10th is the public hearing, for the public to come and give us their voice, and then the public hearing will be closed, and then we debate on the 15th.
That's correct.
So we cannot have the public here on the 15th? Right. They can come and watch, but they won't be heard on the 15th.
Okay.
Thank you. A lot of fun, as always.